All right. I call this meeting back to order. And Dr. Richardson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to make sure everybody heard me correctly. The tree will not move from the pavilion. The tree will be in front of City Hall. The events of the Grand Illumination will be within the pavilion area. The Grand Illumination starts on, well, the date is Friday, December 6th, at the Sprint Pavilion, and it starts at 4:30. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we have the City Charter amendments, a public hearing, and the city attorney will lead that discussion.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilors. You might call this charting a new course. Boy, tough crowd. But, in all seriousness, before you tonight, the City Charter has, was grant, the current City Charter was granted to the council in 1946. And there has not really been a comprehensive update of that document since 1972. And before you tonight, there are a number of what I've termed "technical amendments" to the document. Number one, gendered terms are going to be removed. Also, references to specific state code provisions are going to be taken out and replaced with general laws of the Commonwealth. And again, the City Charter requires an act of the General Assembly to be amended. So, general laws of the Commonwealth would avoid having to go back every time that the state legislature passes a law, if you had a specific code section referenced, having to go back and ask for a charter amendment. But, there are really four major changes that I'd like to highlight that are before you tonight. One is the city council elections. The Charter still states they are held in May. The Charter would be updated to reflect the current practice of holding those elections in November. Also, the school board is still, the Charter has, states that it's an appointed body. It's been an elected body for over a decade now, so that would be updated. Bonding, which, there are a number of provisions in there that relate to bonding and specific limits. Those have all been deleted in favor of having a general clause that says that the city of Charlottesville has the same bonding capacity and powers, that all cities in the Commonwealth of Virginia are granted through the Constitution of Virginia and the laws of the Commonwealth. And finally, which I think is something that is really important to this body, the current Charter reads that if a member of council resigned, the vacancy must be filled at the next regular meeting of council. So, in the unfortunate incident that somebody on council resigned, let's say, last night, the council, as the Charter is currently written, would have to fill that vacancy tonight. So, what's proposed is that, again, filling vacancies would be in accordance with the state law, which allows 45 days, which would allow council to take applications and have a more thorough process if there was a vacancy that opened up on council. So, I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any about these amendments.
Any clarifying questions, counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Blair, for your work. I'd like to make a motion. We do have a public, sorry. I'll go home.
All right, so, we have a public hearing on the matter, so I'm opening the public hearing. We didn't have a sign-up sheet up, so if you would like to speak, you can just come up to the mic. So, charter amendments, is there anyone who would like to speak on the charter amendments? All right. Closing public hearing. Is there a motion?
This only requires one.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the charter amendments to the city of Charlottesville as recommended by Attorney John Blair.
Second. All right, any further discussion?
Just thank you very much for your work, Mr. Blair.
Thank you.
All right, please vote. All right, that carries forward.
Thank you.
Zero. Next, we have the A through D of ordinance and resolutions related to the civilian review board.
Again, good evening, Mayor Walker, councilors. Tonight, before you, there were some changes requested at the last meeting, but I think there have also been a number of amendments proposed tonight during the matters from the public. So, what I'd like to do is go over some of the changes from the documents before you that were made between October 21st and November 4th. And then, I know that the body would probably like to discuss some of the proposals you've heard, well, received today and heard about tonight. So, first, the auditor resolution. There were some changes made to that at Counselor Galvin's request, as well as Counselor Hill. The resolution before you, and again, I know there's another resolution that's been presented tonight, but the resolution before you would require an executive director to report to you by June of 2020, or within 60 days of the executive director's appointment, whichever is later, about a couple of different topics, one being the recommendation of whether to hire a full or part-time auditor or contract that position. There would also be a recommendation about a memorandum of understanding between the civilian review board and the chief of police. Additionally, there would, this resolution says there will be a sufficient appropriation. The city manager would recommend a sufficient appropriation to the council to employ a consultant to assist the executive director in composing their report. These were changes that were requested at your last meeting about the resolution. Another change before you is the policy resolution. That came up at the last meeting, and I know Ms. Burke, I didn't see her tonight, but she'd made some comments to the mayor previously, and the mayor brought them up, about the idea that the ordinance read in a way that the only advance notice that would, I guess, I use the term "advance notice," that's inaccurate. The only policy that the CRB would review in advance of Charlottesville Police Department enactment was the Internal Affairs Investigation Policy. Based on the council's discussion, as well as Ms. Burke and others from the initial CRB, now, the CRB would be empowered to review policies that are contained in a resolution. Right now, that resolution only contains one policy, which is the Internal Affairs, but the CRB is empowered to make recommendations to add further policies to that resolution to the council in the future. I do know, again, materials presented tonight, I think, listed three other additional policies they'd like the council to add to that resolution, which I've composed and is in your packet. The composition of the civilian review board, that was a topic at the last meeting. We used the colloquial terms of 4-3 or 3-4, but actually, the council's preference was that there would be three members from historically disadvantaged communities or residents of public housing. One member, who is a member of an organization that advocates for racial or social justice, and then, three other members. And I think we colloquially call that 3-1-3. And so, now, the ordinance and bylaws reflect the 3-1-3 composition of the board?
I just have one question about that. That, were we not open to the live or work in the city for that one?
Well, I think that's an interesting point. I would be open to, for that specific person, whether they live or work in the city, for that specific position, because I think it's valid that many individuals who work for those kind of organizations, they don't necessarily live in the city, part of which due to affordable housing issues, but that's another discussion. Okay, I got you.
Okay. If the council would like to do that, happy to make that change, but I want to point out that in Section 2-453 of the ordinance, it says the seven voting members of this
Will live.
Will be residents.
Residents, yeah.
And then, one of them will represent an organization that seeks racial or social justice on behalf of historically disadvantaged communities. And I think you're right, there was some debate about whether that had to be a Charlottesville-specific organization or in the area.
Well, I'm thinking, let's say, if it were someone, let's say, from legal aid, who may work at legal aid in Charlottesville, but they may not live in the city. Could that person, I mean, I think that person would serve, potentially serve the board well, if they wanted to apply. So, for the one, the 3-1-3, for the one position, if that person could live or work in the city.
Yeah, I mean, I raised that last time, and I'm open to that, but.
I'll be fine with that as well.
Just Mayor Walker, I'd not, I have no problem with that being an allowance for the member of the CRB. I do have pause about the executive director not being a city resident. I really do think that that is an important criteria, so that there is a person that is really part of this community. And when you say they could be in the region, there's, there's a real, can be a very, very different environment.
No, just from the one position that it could be.
I agree with that one, but earlier, we were talking about the executive director being able to live outside of the city.
Oh, I didn't have that discussion.
I don't agree with that one.
I concur in that regard.
So, we're just talking about the one.
The one position.
Okay. Me, I had, I had stated that I thought that all of them should live in the city, but I'm, I'm flexible for it, I hear the arguments.
Okay.
Okay.
Good. So, what I will do, then, is change the ordinance and bylaws to reflect that six members shall be residents of the city of Charlottesville, but that the one member who represents an organization that seeks racial or social justice on behalf of historically disadvantaged communities does not have to be a resident of the city of Charlottesville.
But live or work in the.
But lit, but must live or work. Okay, all right. Then, been a few technical amendments I wanted to go over. Wanted been to limit the review to a findings of unfounded, exonerated, or not resolved. You will see internal affairs complaints in which one portion may be sustained. You know, one aspect of the complaint will be sustained.
Is that none?
Or, these are on the technical amendments that I've made. The reason for that is, quite frankly, it could create an awkwardness in the employment law context. If there is a complaint against an officer, and CPD ultimately sustains that complaint and makes a disciplinary action based on that complaint. If that were then allowed to be reviewed by the CRB, and the CRB came to an opposite conclusion about the sustained and said instead that needs to be unfounded, I think you, quite frankly, it could set up the city for an employment lawsuit that the individual could challenge the original CPD decision to discipline the officer as arbitrary or capricious, because you've got another city advisory body saying that the officer, in fact, didn't commit the offense that was sustained against that person. Another technical amendment was to clarify the term grievance proceeding. In Virginia, police officers, or I should say, law enforcement officers have an option. They can either go through the city's grievance proceeding or what's called the Virginia Law Enforcement Officers Procedural Guarantee Act. So, that's been changed to reflect they have that choice. And then, in terms of, there had been, I've added that the complainant needs to consent to have the CRB review their complaint. If, and here's, there are a couple of reasons. Number one would be that the bylaws and the ordinance require that the complainant appear before the CRB and give a presentation about why they are appealing. But, number two, I think there is an issue with something called the Government Data Collection and Dissemination Act, where if a complainant doesn't consent to their data being turned, somebody filed an internal affairs complaint with the police department, if they don't consent to turning that data over, I think there could be an issue there as well. So, the ordinance and bylaws read that there would need to be consent for the complaint to go before the CRB. CRB could still vote to authorize it, and if the complainant agreed, it would go forward, but this does require consent from the complainant.
Okay.
And then, I wanted to, sort of at this point, kind of turn it over to Mayor Walker. I know that you've been presented 10 possible amendments tonight.
So, we received this earlier today, and I think from the discussions that we've been able to have since we received them, that Amendment Two, which would require CPD to forward all complaints filed with the CPD to the CRB's executive director. What the police department will do, because I, we'd had this, we've been having this conversation back and forth for months, is just add a, add a clause to their complaint form that gives the complainant the ability to opt out if they choose to. Other than that, they will forward all complaints unless that box is checked. And, and I think that's it. So, yeah, I just had a brain freeze, but. So, that's moving forward, that's the only addition there. And if the box is checked, the CRB will be notified that there was a complainant who said that they did not want it forward. And that's just in case if a individual, which, you know, I don't, well, I'll keep my opinion. But, if an individual wanted to file with the CPD, but not the CRB for whatever reason, then that individual would be able to opt out of the information being shared, but the CRB would be notified that that complainant opted out of the information being shared. So, the CRB would be aware of a complaint either way. Number three, require written explanation from the city manager when CRB recommendations require the hiring and termination of staff are not followed. So, Dr. Richardson is open to that being added with no problem. Number four, agreement to add the following, require written responses from CPD to CRB after CRB makes policy recommendation, comments on proposed policy amendments. And we would not add the issue complaint review findings. Number five. So, in agreement with all of number four, except the last, after and issue complaint review findings. Number five, add CPD's bias-based policing, disciplinary procedures, constitutional procedures, and use of force policies. And that's fine. And Mr. Blair, if you just want to add, discuss that legally, if there was a mandate.
Right. Well, Mayor Walker, before Mr. Blair does, just, just for the record, me personally, I'm in favor of their proposed, the entire amendment for number four. It's fine if others feel, otherwise, I just wanted to be known as that.
Mayor Walker, to your question, in terms of the policy review, there is a provision here in terms of, if you can give me one second to find this provision. Policy recommendations, you just wanted me to highlight in section two dash four fifty-eight. The last paragraph does say, upon the determination of the chief of police in consultation with the city manager and police civilian review board executive director, that it's impractical present, to present an amendment to a policy listed on the November fourth, two thousand nineteen city council resolution to the police civilian review board at least thirty days before its enactment. City manager may waive the thirty-day advance review requirement. The amendment shall still be presented to the police civilian review board for review and comment. That is, that's sort of what I would just call a emergency measure. In case, for instance, there was a court ruling or something of that nature that required an immediate policy amendment. I don't think there would be, but it is worth having that in there in case there was some legal mandate to change a policy. I think the city would do that upon a court order. And it may be that it would be impractical for the thirty-day review period. It would still be presented to the CRB for comment, but if we were under a court order or something of that nature. That's why that paragraph is there.
Okay. And then, seven, to ensure the CRB's annual report is a public document and include minimum requirements for what is to be in the report. And the discussion here was just that, you know, the executive director along with the board would be the, you know, basically decide what the, you know, the report should contain. If there were other factors that council wanted to, you know, have discussed, then we would say that. But we wouldn't lay out what the report should include, but definitely supportive of it being public. And so then, amendment one, six, eight, nine, and ten were, I guess at this time, not going to be added.
So, a question, sorry. Mayor Walker, specifically in regards to number six, the auditor position. I understand that we have, we discussed during the last discussion, potentially having a consultant of sorts and having them, allowing them to have a trial capacity. And it seems as if my colleagues are very clear in regards to not wanting to move forward with number six. I'm wondering if the happy median is, if we're going to do the consultant, just to be clear, the new CRB is going to be allowed to choose the consultant, or where that come from?
No, we would just provide the funding, they can hire whomever they want.
So would a, would a healthy compromise be if the CRB gets started and they already have a pot of money, quote unquote, to be able to outsource for a consultant? What if they wanted to use those funds to hire someone for a short period of time, or a long-term consultant?
So I think the, the dollar amount there would be different. But I think what, I know there was concern about the sixty days, the, that the sixty days and the short timeframe. I think what we, I think what I hear us saying is that at whatever point the executive director and the board said that, based on their recommendations, that it was time to hire the auditor, that we are asking the city manager to work with them on that.
So if the, if the executive director comes in and, and within a month says, look, this work is a lot different from what we originally thought it should be, we need to bring an auditor in, we'll proceed forth with authorizing he or she to be able to do such? Is that what we're saying?
Mayor, my understanding, Mayor Walker, is that, that it's a position, full-time employee, FTE, is not budgeted for this position with the next fiscal year. But in the interim, during the first year startup, there will be funds provided to allow the executive director in consultation with the CRB to hire a consultant that has that expertise. And then that also then allows the opportunity to then provide the fiscal management that's needed to make sure that in the next fiscal year, there are the funds for a full-time employee.
But the consultant has a lifespan of how long?
So if the, based on the conversation from the last council meeting, we would get that report by June.
Yes.
And then, we would know that by July one, that it would be in that budget cycle. So what you're saying is if they came earlier, would we find the funding to make sure that they-
That that position is addressed. I mean, again, if the executive director comes in and says, within a month, or let's just say two months, this work is a lot different than what we expected, we really need an auditor. Does that individual, again, he or she have the autonomy to say, I need to draw down on funding to be able to go and hire, in consultation with the CRB, an auditor? And I think at the very minimum, if everyone is clear that they don't need to get an auditor now, that kind of leeway or language needs to be written into the bylaws to allow them to have the ability to be able to do such at a time period in which they deem necessary, not us.
I think it's, all of us have expressed support for recognizing that this auditor position is going to need to be filled. It's just the manner in which it's filled is what we want to leave up to the executive director and the PCRB that's in place to determine what that looks like in this shorter-term period. I don't think that our intention is to slow that process down, but to make an informed decision based on what these initial resources are determining.
So if that's the case, then why not just let them get it? Because we all said, we all have said that they know the position is needed. I'm just using this logic. If we, if we all have said they know they need the position and eventually they're going to get it, why not just let them start with it? Or at the very minimum, if we're not willing to do that, let them start with it from the beginning. Let's allow them to have the autonomy to do such in a time period, again, in which they deem necessary. Does that, am I not making, I mean, like, because if I'm not being clear, it's fine. Like, I can maybe be more clear, or am I being?
The council of Balm, it would be helpful to me if you could explain why the current document that we have, we're allowing for an outside consultant to come in with those qualifications. Why that doesn't work for you?
No, I'm sorry.
I mean, just why, why doesn't that solution work for you in the interim, in the time it's, it'll take? Maybe that could be the long-term solution. Maybe, maybe in the other end of the spectrum, there isn't the volume in which having an on-call consultant is the way that's most expedient and most cost-effective.
It's not that it necessarily doesn't work for me. I'm just saying, I think, in my personal opinion, we need to allow the board to have the autonomy to be able to decide when they need to shift from the consultant to moving forward in terms of, we need to be able to go ahead and hire the auditor. That's the only differentiation that, that I'm requesting.
That, that was coming through the reporting mechanisms we have for the executive director.
But the reporting mechanism, the only issue with that is that the reporting mechanism is so far out, that if in the immediate-
It's within sixty days. If they get hired in January, it would be within sixty days, if they want it to be. We just didn't want to have them not have enough time to make that decision, as was raised again tonight.
Which is why, I don't think, so if we remove the time period piece, like within, if we remove the sixty days piece, it gives them the ability for them to determine when. So, so I, using your example, if the individual is hired, he or she, the executive director is hired in January, just hypothetically speaking, because I doubt, yeah, if they're hired in January and within that first month, they're saying, like, the, the amount of complaints is coming in, they're doing the reviews, and they're just saying, there's something that really needs to be different here. Even if they get a consultant, they come to the realization, I don't need a consultant, I need someone who's going to be long-term. Can we allow them the autonomy to be able to go out and proceed in that manner?
By December twenty?
Without a time period. Is that clear?
Yes. And I think what you're really getting at is this first paragraph of the resolution, right? And it says, be it resolved by the council of the city of Charlottesville, Virginia, that the police civilian review board's executive director shall issue a report to the Charlottesville city council in June twenty twenty or within sixty days of the executive director's appointment by city council, if the appointment occurs after April thirtieth, twenty twenty. And you could add a clause or earlier as determined by the executive director.
That would, that would satisfy, uh, yeah, right. I feel like that's a healthy compromise.
I think the, yeah, the sixty days was added at the suggestion of Councilor Hill in case there was somebody, let's say, let's say the first batch of applicants, nobody liked them. And you had to go back out and get a new batch of applicants. It could be after April thirtieth before an executive director was hired. And I think her point was, there's just an expectation such a report would be sixty days. And you wouldn't want to say, well, you know, you're hired June first, be here before June thirtieth with a report. But we can add in your language, or as, or earlier as determined by the executive director. That to the first paragraph?
Yes, please. Is there support from our colleagues in that regard to add that language? All right, cool.
I just like a lot of flexibility in case we can't, and also at the same time, don't want to have no date. Otherwise, we'll find ourselves just going down the rabbit hole.
No, I understand why you did it, but I think adding that language, it, it just addresses both sides.
Okay.
Item, amendment seven. We said that we weren't proceeding forth with seven, correct?
No, we are.
We are.
We are, okay, I wanted, I didn't mark that. We aren't proceeding forth with, we are proceeding forth with eight. We are proceeding forth with eight.
No, because it goes with six.
I think that we, we're not proceeding forth with nine, correct?
Yeah, no.
Correct. And I think, I think it's important for us to at least inform them, inform the community, not them just who are here, but inform the community in terms of why, not nine. So, I think when we say, for example, like, we're not moving forth with X, Y, and Z, without some form of explanation in terms of like why?
Oh, we, I was, we were having a discussion.
She was, she had gotten her album.
Oh, all right, okay.
Well, go ahead, you can leave.
No, I-
You're doing a great job.
Thank you, Mayor Walker.
Happy birthday.
Wish I could throw this cookie down, down at you. Uh, I'm also, in terms of number nine, this is one of the, I mean, I was in favor and understood where a lot of the members, the amendments came from. Nine was one in which, me personally, gave me a little heartburn. Mainly because when you have individuals' names in the public like that, we've seen sometimes it has the adverse effect. People not want to put themselves out because they think that they're then going to be doxxed in some regards on social media. They're going to be opened up to getting trolled. Individuals are going to, to say negative things about them. And they don't just want to expose themselves to that until they absolutely have to. And I think we need to be cognizant of that's how some people are. And those could be good people who could actually benefit and do well on the board. So, that's where I'm coming from in that regards, but the others, I'll leave to you all.
And that discussion was just centered around just HR policies and, you know, not wanting people to not apply that then were concerned about if, you know, if their names, if they had other jobs and they didn't get the position and their names were out there and then their employer. And it's the same conversation that we've had around having the public forums with, like even city manager, you know, police chief, you know, things like that. There are certain positions that are higher up where they know that once you're a finalist is the, you know, expectation. But the concern here was just, since it's not one of the, while it's a very important position, not wanting to not have, you know, the best applicant pool possible as a result. I think, are there any more comments?
Um, Mayor Walker, I'm not sure procedurally what the best way to do it, but, um-
But no more comments about that?
No more comments on this. So, should we deal with this batch of the, of the CRB materials before Vice Mayor Hill and my resolution about the qualifications of the executive director resolution could come forth?
Does that come under B?
Yeah, does any of that relate?
Yes.
So I should, we should bring it up now?
I think it probably, you should bring it up now.
So, Mayor Walker, earlier today, I had sent digitally some doc, the resolution that Vice Mayor Hill and I had worked on, that deal with outlining the professional qualifications and responsibilities of the executive director for the police civilian review board. That was something that was discussed at our last meeting that we felt was important and that we really did, and I want to use the expression that Vice Mayor Hill uses, leverage the work of this, of the original initial CRB. And so what this resolution does is pretty much take the language out of the, out of the initial documents that talk about the kinds of qualifications that an executive director would need. And this was to provide direction for the city manager, as the city manager goes about hiring. So, it, it may be helpful to read this because it hasn't, we didn't get it in time to post it. But that's your pleasure. So, I'll go read it then. So this is a resolution on the professional qualifications for and responsibilities of the executive director of the police civilian review board. Whereas the initial police civilian review board report of July second, twenty nineteen, provided the council of the city of Charlottesville with an overview of the professional staffing requirements for the executive director position and firmly stated that, quote, "The executive director position is foundational and fundamental" to the, end of quote, "to the oversight mission of the PCRB. And whereas there are many facets to the executive director's work that cannot be fully addressed by a board comprised of civilian volunteers requiring support, training, and procedural guidance, be it resolved that the council of the city of Charlottesville directs the city manager to ensure that at a minimum, the position of executive director for the PCRB shall have the qualifications and professional expertise to be responsible for executing the following tasks in the following manner. One, organizing board operations and developing and administering procedures and policies pursuant to the PCRB bylaws and ordinance adopted by this council on November four, twenty nineteen. Two, coordinating community outreach and facilitating the PCRB's ability to go to the community- Two, coordinating community outreach and facilitating the PCRB's ability to go to the community. Three, serving as an in-house board resource, inclusive of orga- inclusive of organizing and developing necessary training to ensure that PCRB board members are made privy to highly sensitive departmental files and personnel information, and given support to ensure that members handle all materials competently and with the requisite circumspection. Four, serving as an initial point of contact in conducting complaint intake and processing in a responsive, professional, and confidential manner that is sensitive to the complainant's circumstances, which may involve trauma. Five, analyzing police data and writing evidence-based reports, memorandum of understanding, resolutions, requests for proposal for outside professional expertise, in areas such as evidence-based research and independent police department auditing, and job descriptions for an independent police department auditor. And six, possessing in-depth knowledge of and experience with police processes and working with police data, as well as trauma-informed training, and a working knowledge of the importance of providing a safe physical space where confidential information exchanges with complainants can take place. So, that is the complete resolution. I don't know, Mayor, Vice Mayor Hill, is there anything else you want to add?
Yeah, I was just gonna, a lot of this is just, we want to make sure that, you know, there's some concerns around the qualifications, and obviously the budget that we allocate, and this is really just setting kind of the tone foundationally for this is the caliber of applicants that we're looking for, and this again, came directly from the recommendations from the initial PCRB. Thank you, Counselor Galvin, for your leadership on this.
So, I guess that's the full package.
And to talk procedurally about that, I think if, if the council wanted to act on Counselor Galvin's resolution, then there would need to be a motion to amend the resolution in your packet to include this resolution.
So, which, which resolution would be amended?
The resolution authorizing a Police Civilian Review Board Executive Director to prepare a June 2020 report to City Council. And you can amend it by adding on the resolution you just read, which highlights the qualifications the council wishes the city manager to ensure in an Executive Director.
Just make sure I have that exact language. Okay. So, Mayor Walker, then I am making a motion to amend the resolution authorizing Police Civilian Review Board, oh, excuse me, there's too many documents here. I'm making a motion to amend the resolution authorizing Police Civilian Review Board Executive Director to prepare a June 2020 report to City Council to include the resolution on the professional qualifications for and responsibilities of the Executive Director of the Police Civilian Review Board.
A second.
Okay, so we're not there yet?
Right, you would need to adopt the amendment if you want to add that to the resolution.
Yeah, okay. All right, so, um-
So, now we're just working through each of these documents?
No, the, probably A through, right, D is where we are.
No.
So, I'm just interested, are, just for maybe any, are you all open to maybe hearing a comment or two?
I was, I was literally going to, to request if, I mean, similar how we did last time, could we have a ten-minute, if we literally kept it at ten minutes, could we have a ten-minute public comment?
All right.
So, maybe instead of, Mayor Walker just suggested, I'm sorry, instead of us doing, you know, two minutes per person, if we literally set a ten-minute timer like that, and then it just counted down, and then individuals come and speak?
Okay.
If, if my colleagues are open to that, it allows us some.
All right, so is there anyone that would like to comment on the conversation that we just had?
So, I think Ms. Adio.
I have a question and a clarification. So, because the decision about the auditor is going to be taking place after a report is done, then at least that's how it stands right now, right? Then, then a new ordinance and new bylaws have to be written and read twice by council in order to make the position and the job happen? Is that how it would work? Because all the other position, the Executive Director is in the ordinance and in the bylaws and everything. So, what procedurally would have to, it feels like it's going to get delayed, and that was one of the reasons why we wanted to have it right in there, because it might take two or three months.
So, to that point, would this fall on the personnel on which the Executive Director has the autonomy to just hire?
Right. I mean, I think it depends, again, on structure. For instance, you know, the Executive Director and the CRB, my anticipation would be this, that in fiscal year, I guess we'd be in fiscal year 21 next year, there would be a budget presented by the Executive Director that would include, like all departmental budgets, a list of, in full-time, and what do we call it? Full-time equivalents, is that the, full-time equivalents? And there would be a line item probably for an auditor in that. And if the council adopted that budget through an appropriation of funds, that in and of itself would authorize the hiring of the auditor. Now, to the commenter's point, you would probably go back at that point and amend the ordinance and bylaws. But I think when you look at it from a fiscal year perspective, if you're hiring the auditor in fiscal year 2021, and that was needed, the audit, the ordinance and the bylaws could be amended, or that position could, it doesn't have to be listed in either one. Just like not every city employee position is found in the code or bylaws.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
So, I think that addresses that in that regard, right? Okay.
It's our fiscal year that begins July, next, July 1st of next year.
So, with that additional information from Mr. Blair, it seems that what you're proposing then is almost the same thing as the community substitute resolution on the auditor, except you won't be including actual time and space for someone to learn all the things you're expecting to go, to, 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 to support a recommendation as to whether or not an auditor should be hired, right? And that's what's in the substitute resolution submitted today from community members. Having looked at countless review boards, dozens upon dozens across the country, it is almost impossible to get someone who will be this Executive Director as described in the alternate or the additional resolution proposed by Ms. Galvin and Ms. Hill. Those qualifications are unique. The person you're describing in your additional resolution, who will have administrative skills of an Executive Director, as well as data skills, as well as other familiarity with policing, is not someone that is readily found in and amongst people of that profession. An Executive Director, that skill set, is a completely different skill set than what an auditor would do. An auditor is essentially a data scientist. An Executive Director is an administrator who runs processes and operations to keep, you know, things moving forward. It's not the same, and you can't blend those qualifications to then think you will hire that person who could, within sixty days, or sooner, then make a, a, a sound recommendation as to whether or not an auditor should be hired. It's just not a, a, a very well-thought-out or informed approach, because you will be hard-pressed to actually find someone who will meet the qualifications and be able to turn around what you are hoping they will be able to tell you. The, the alternate resolution submitted by the community today says, same timeframe, first fiscal year 2021, when a proposal would come to council to say yea or nay on an auditor, whether that be a full-time FTE, part-time FTE, or consultant. So, it leaves open that possibility of what type of relationship the auditor would have. And then give space for the Executive Director and administrator to hire a data scientist on a consulting basis, to inform them for a year as to what's happening with the data in the Charlottesville Police Department, to then give an informed judgment as to whether or not an auditor needs to be hired on a full-time basis, part-time basis, or continue in a consulting role. The compressed timeframe that you are suggesting right now is just completely unreasonable and will not yield you the results that you're looking for.
And I, um, I'm sure that we agree. I mean, this came in a response, instead of staggering the two positions, the community demands to hire them both at the same time, when there was not agreement to hire them both at the same time. So, this has been the attempt to compromise from the community demands, and I hear what you're saying, just hire the position, but-
On a trial period, consulting, not full-time FTE or part-time FTE, of consulting with a, a decision from the city manager as to what that limited appropriation would need to look like at present.
But I still think in that year, the year commitment there is where, as a council agreement, we did not make yet, and so we would still be back to waiting until the executive, the director was on that initial report, and then moving forward after that. So, I think the compressed timeframe, I understand, but it's been trying to respond and compromise with the requests that we are hearing. It wasn't that, it was ideal.
No, I, I, I get that that's what's trying to be negotiated, but I think it's misguided because you're not giving the Executive Director the help he or she needs with the actual qualifications an Executive Director will have to actually make an informed decision about an auditor. What the auditor's skills are look different from an Executive Director's skills. To the extent that the Executive Director is hired and begins his or her role, they will need to consult someone with an auditor's skills.
And there was different skills outlined for the auditor. We literally were taking the skills that were recommended for the Executive Director. There's other skills for the auditor, but this was kind of an outline of what we understood from the initial board's output that they wanted to see in an Executive Director, and we were just trying to provide more, like, direction based on the input from the initial CRB.
The initial CRB's proposal included an auditor at the same time.
Right, but it has a different set of qualifications.
But that would have the, the very specific technical skill set-
Okay.
-to inform a recommendation about an auditor.
And all we were doing was outlining the qualifications for the Executive Director.
Correct. But that Executive Director will not have the support necessary, if you don't provide it, to make an informed decision about whether an auditor is necessary.
Well, that was the compromise last time of giving them a budget with the consulting dollars.
Unless the consultant is an auditor.
That's what we were discussing.
We don't, we don't really have the qualifica-, I mean, really, speaking to Adio's point, we don't have the qualifications to be able to write that job description, because this isn't our area of expertise.
We're not. We took what the initial CRB gave us.
So, Mayor, Mayor Walker, if I may, may explain behind, again, as, as Vice Mayor Hill said, the, the job, the qualifications that came out of the initial CRB's work are embedded in this resolution that I just read. What is added is the, is the knowledge base that needed to be in the Executive Director, so that an Executive Director would know what he or she would need in finding an auditor, not that she, he or she would be the auditor. That was not the intention, it's not written as such. So, the idea of a person in this position has got to be able to read reports that have police data. They've got to understand what they're reading as an Executive Director. It doesn't mean that they're going to be doing the research themselves, or, or auditing the police reports and the police functions themselves, but they've got to know how to understand that information, and they've got to know who they're looking for, because they're going to be the key person writing the job, the draft job description to give to the city manager, the key person who would be having to write the RFPs, request for proposals, to get outside consulting for an auditor. So, that's why that, that had to be embedded in this resolution about the Executive Director. So, that they're not left high and dry, not understanding, and they can't be of a, of a, of a, of a caliber that doesn't, doesn't have that skill set.
But what I'm saying is, with respect to that point, which I understand wholeheartedly where you're coming from, I think it's, it's hard-pressed for us as counselors, and I appreciate the work y'all put in, but it's difficult for us as counselors.
It's came from the CRBs.
Yeah, but even for us, right, but even us, us picking which specific parts to put together for the job description, we are not experts in regards into doing that. This is literally what they do, and this is what they spent their time in. So, then for us to do it-
We also have our city attorney who's been advising us as well, and I'm not an attorney.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so there's two minutes.
Great, I'll take my two minutes. By-
I think there's one person after you walk.
Okay. By, by refusing to, to work on amendments one, six, eight, nine, and 10, you have basically gutted the proposal from the original CRB. And I say shame on you for doing that. This is the capital of the resistance? Is this what the capital of the resistance does after 2017? When there was racial injustice and white supremacy in this town, and the, and the rest of this city, and this town, and the country is looking for you to do something completely different and not boilerplate? Is this what you do? You nickel-and-dine your own professional CRB into, into doing something that is completely symbolic, just like the Human Rights Commission, and won't work? If you don't build it right, they won't come, and I think you know that. I think you know that. The post-2017 resolution was, that you put together was really strong. And the statements that some of you made in the newspaper were incredulous about how much we needed to stop, stop and frisk and racism, racism in the police department. You said it. I have it on my computer, what you said in the newspaper. You're not following through on those statements or that commitment. The, I, the initial CRB delivered on what you asked, and it was itself the result of a negotiated order. That, what you got from the initial CRB was negotiated and compromised down, and now you're watering it down, nickel-and-diming it down even further. I don't understand how we get from 2017 and your resolution to this. What are you thinking? What are you thinking? Why are we tinkering, tinkering with this if it's a matter of racial justice and racial equity, right? It's important for you to signal to the community that you're serious about this, that this is a serious commitment to solving a serious racial inequity in this town. And what you're doing tonight is tinkering with that and watering it down in a way that I find unbelievable. I know your hearts are in the right place, but I don't know what's going on behind the scenes, but this is not it, and you know it. This is tinkering it and fooling around with it and turning it into the, into the Human Rights Commission, which has no teeth, and, and nobody uses the way it should. You're going to do the same thing, and you're going to waste our taxpayer money on that again. So, I don't know why you're doing it. Why do we have business as usual again? This is business as usual. It's not post-2017 thinking. You're not providing an example to the community. You're not presiding, providing an example to the rest of the country. That's waiting for us to do something different. They're waiting for us to, to show them how you respond to white supremacy, and you're not doing it tonight.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, we've canceled eight, correct? Because we said eight is a duplicate of six, right? But for eight, in regards to just allowing them to mandate the special report, I mean, having it written as such, although I think it may be similar- Excuse me, eight and seven, sorry. Yeah, it's in, but ensure and mandate are two different things.
So I don't know why the CRB's report wouldn't be a public document.
But that's why we need to be specific in regards that it needs-
We did, we said we were gonna-
Yeah.
Don't hire your friends.
I just think- To the auditor's side, right. But I, all right. Okay.
Okay.
So are you clear on all the, or not?
So-
Okay, it, let's go through procedurally-
Okay.
-where we are. There's an, A is listed as the ordinance. First thing, I, I guess I'd look to all five counselors. Mayor Walker mentioned an earlier amendment, um, that the 313 framework that's been proposed, there would be six city residents, and then the individual, the, the member who represents an organization that seeks racial or social justice on behalf of historically disadvantaged communities must either li- reside or work in the city of Charlottesville. So, is everybody fine with that amendment as, as presented just now?
Yes.
Second, um, there were a series of amendments that Mayor Walker just proposed, and what I, and those amendments would apply to both the ordinance, bylaws, and one of the resolutions, which is the one that lists the policies. What I would probably ask for right now would be a motion and, um, to adopt those amendments. And then if that passes, then I would probably ask that you would pass the ordinance, bylaws, and then we will get to Counselor Galvin's proposed amendment to the resolution.
And just before that, I do have, um, I know that the public didn't speak a lot on the matter of a council member being on the board, but you all still, that did not change in the ordinance, and so that's where everyone still was. All right.
Okay, do you, do you have a, um-
So is a motion to direct the city attorney to amend the ordinance, bylaws, and resolution consistent with the proposed amendments that have been outlined? Is that right?
Correct, right.
That's my motion.
And what I will do, I will look at the materials presented tonight and just make sure they're consistent, and then I will ultimately amend the ordinance and bylaws in that way, based on the five, based on the amendments that have been outlined by Mayor Walker.
Okay. All right, so there's, needs to be a second.
Yes.
Second.
And we need to vote, yeah?
Yeah.
Please vote.
And now there are two resolutions. One should be, I think, simple because it would incorporate those new policies in addition to the internal affairs policy. And I think you should probably just vote on that separately right now. And that, that is the resolution that's entitled Resolution Listing Charlottesville Police Department Policies Pursuant to Charlottesville City Code Section 2-458. And again, that will be amended to include those three policies that were just voted upon.
All right, so I move to adopt a resolution listing Charlottesville Police Department policies pursuant to Charlottesville City Code Section 2-458.
Is there a second?
Second.
And this is B.
Right.
C.
C, I believe.
Right, C.
Okay, yeah, I'm looking right at it, that's what I meant.
Yep.
Okay. All right, please vote. That carries four to one.
Okay, and now we will get to the Executive Director Resolution. First, does any counselor oppose Dr. Bellamy's addition of the term, of the phrase, uh, phrase or earlier as determined by the executive director?
Uh-uh.
Okay. Then what I would do is, at this point, I think there was some questions about Counselor, adding Counselor Galvin's resolution as an amendment to this resolution. So procedurally, you're amending this resolution before you, that includes Dr. Bellamy's language to include what Counselor Galvin read about the executive director. If that, if that amendment would be approved, then you would vote on the full resolution with the amended amendment.
So, we're moving to adopt this resolution?
Well, move to amend the resolution.
To amend the resolution to include the comment, the edit in paragraph one from Dr. Bellamy, as well as to add a resolution to provide guidance on the executive, that just provides guidance on the executive director's qualification.
Well, you, it, it's really, you're amending that resolution to include that language.
Okay. I move to amend this resolution.
So amend this resolution that was presented, that one, okay.
It's, it's the one in here.
About the executive director's preparing a report, and we're going to add the language that Dr. Bellamy requested and also this additional layer of another resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
So we vote on that and then we vote to-
And then you would vote to adopt the final resolution.
Okay.
So that's everything that was already posted to adding what Counselor Bellamy wanted to add in terms of having more flexibility with the executive director. I just heard some questions out there.
Correct. This, this resolution, and I'll, I'll just go through it, that first paragraph, if you want to take a look, it is the document that's, that's called under lowercase b in section three of your packet.
Right.
That first paragraph will now read, "Be it resolved by the Council of the City of Charlottesville, Virginia, that the Police Civilian Review Board's executive director shall issue a report to the Charlottesville City Council in June 2020 or within 60 days of the executive director's appointment by city council, if the appointment occurs after April 30th, 2020, or earlier as determined by the executive director."
Yes.
Can I say, end our public conference, hearing is over. Can I say something very briefly? It, respectfully to, to Doc, I'm sorry, to Dr., respectfully to Dr. Bellamy's proposed amendment to allow the executive director to make the period for the report briefer? It seems that what the community is asking for is actually to allow more time. The concern seems to be that there needs a more robust engagement with auditor position. So I just, it seems like the, the hesitance is that council doesn't want, doesn't feel comfortable committing to an extended auditor position even on a consultant basis, but I just, for clarity purpose, the, I think the anxiety I'm hearing from the community is that that's too brief of a period for an auditor to provide meaningful guidance to the executive director who's also being on-boarded during that period, that 60 days is just not enough time. Um, and there's not a specific financial appropriation you've tagged for this consulting relationship yet. So it kind of seems to me that what needs to happen is there to be the ability for the executive director to have more time with the consultant rather than less. Um, I don't know how open council is to that, but I know you are on the cusp of your vote and I just was on the edge of my seat, so thank you for your-
Thank you, Kelly.
Thanks.
But that was, I think, the initial discussion was the having it by June, which we were told was too long. And so I think this should cover whether it's brief or by June, right? Everything in between there should be covered now?
Right.
Okay.
In effect, to, uh, the individuals' comment, um, what the, if we adopt, if the council adopts Dr. Bellamy's proposed amendment, the executive director, once he or she is hired, can at any time propose the auditor position and present a report to council. However, if they're hired before April 30th, they must make a report by June 2020. If they were hired after April, after April 30th, let's say they were hired May 15th, they would be required to present a report to council by July 15.
Okay.
And, and again, that, that's the council's prerogative. You can certainly extend the time as well.
So instead of 60 days, have 90 days or something like that?
Well, I think the point is that what I think is covered, we either need to commit to hiring this, authorizing to hire this position now, or the process that we have right now. And so I don't think that there's another, uh, you know, agreement. So the discussion isn't whether there's a misunderstanding, it's just there are two different paths, right? And so, okay?
So we're just-
So I think probably first, you would want to vote on Dr. Bellamy's amendment separately.
And the additional thing?
Right.
Okay, so we're going to vote on this? We've already motioned and seconded it?
Right, for Dr. Bellamy's, and then we'll get to Counselor Galvin's.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're voting in your language?
So moved.
Was there a motion?
So moved.
I did it earlier.
You did make your motion, but this will be just for Dr. Bellamy's.
Just for the amended.
Right.
Okay.
All right.
Kathy South, second.
Please vote. All right.
And then the final would be, does the council wish to amend this resolution authorizing the executive director to prepare the June 2020 report to city council to include the amendment from Counselor Galvin, which would include criteria for the city manager to consider in hiring the executive director?
And I just have a question for the initial, um, um, CRB. Is there any, um, concerns that this was not part of the qualifications that you all had listed in your report?
I have an understanding question.
So what Counselor Galvin and Hill, they are saying is that they pulled directly from the report that you all gave these job, um, the qualifications for this position. So I'm asking, are there any concerns about whether that was the case?
As far as I could tell-
If you could come, somebody, if you ask.
Here, fill in the page. As far as I could tell from the oral recitation, that seemed to be, uh, the job description that we set forth in the initial, um, draft, uh, I'm still concerned about what it means for the executive director to use that criteria, because in a sense, the criteria as we came up with it was sort of the best we could do putting our heads together. The ultimate determination about whether an auditor is needed is going to come from a thoroughgoing examination of the data, but this goes back to the cart before the horse problem that Adiola was describing, which is, you know, we can all get, wrap our heads around the kinds of, um, qualities that a auditor will need, but you need the auditor to evaluate the evidence to justify the auditor's existence, which places the executive director in a sort of insoluble bind. We wrapped our heads around the fact that at the end of the day, we think an auditor is needed. We would be 100% confident of that if we had had access to the data that we were requesting throughout the year. We never got that. I fear the executive director won't get that. And when the executive director, if, if the executive director were to get that, well, the executive director still doesn't have the skills necessary to evaluate the data to then justify the position.
So, and I'll do, I'll be real brief. My, my main concern is that in a board that's meant to be transparent, the public hasn't seen this document, we're just hearing about it, but we don't have time to look at it and review it, and that seems to be the opposite of the transparency we're trying to create with this board. What we found over the course of a year is very difficult to put these pieces together because there's lots of moving parts. And when we try to piecemeal this by taking a little bit of this and a little bit of that, we're sort of diluting the, the entire process. So we created something for oversight, and now we're trying to piece together a week review board. So it, it's hard to, to answer your question specifically without taking some time to look at the document and process it.
And I think this conversation came from the discussion last week that we weren't clear about what the ED requirements were.
That's where this came from. We were honestly just trying to be responsive to the feedback we were hearing and-
We know, we get on them.
All right, so, do you want to-
If there's not interest in this, I mean, I just want to know, if there's not, it's fine, we were just trying to kind of bridge a gap.
We're responsive to the concerns that we were all having about not having clarity about this role.
So we can leave this out in the, um, when you all are putting the job description together, you all will have access to the documents that they presented and the HR director and-
It's fine, it's fine.
Okay.
Now, I was going to say that, that the council, we could just have the city manager just take note of what's been presented tonight if you'd prefer not to amend the resolution.
We, it would be good if we could read it, what I read into the minutes. That way it's recorded in the minutes if there needs to be any reference.
Or the clerk can just-
Copy it.
-copy it into the minutes.
Yeah.
God bless that clerk.
So I, I just think it's, it was a public record.
Okay.
Okay, that, that solves it.
All right, so without this edit, what does need to happen?
And then I would, at the very end, just after the amendments were passed, for the bylaws and ordinance, to pass this final resolution that approves the bylaws of the CRB.
Okay, is there a motion?
As amended by Mayor Walker.
So both of them together?
And, right.
Okay. I move we adopt the ordinance adding article-
Well, I would say-
Wait.
You've already amended the ordinance as presented by the amendments present, to, to adopt the ordinance with the amendments as presented by Mayor Walker, as well as the bylaws with the amendments as presented by Mayor Walker.
I move to adopt the ordinance with the amendments as presented by Mayor Walker for both, and, and adopt the bylaws with the amendments as proposed by Mayor Walker.
Second.
All right. All right, please vote. So it's four to one. You can please, okay. So I just need a five minute, okay? So we're going to take a five minute, all right? Um, all right. So we're going to break for five minutes. Thanks.
Meeting back to order. Next, we have the resolution for the Planning and Coordination Council dissolution. And are you presenting?
Good evening, Mayor Walker and councilors. I will give a brief presentation and then turn this over to Vice Mayor Hill. But this is about the University of Virginia, Albemarle County, and the city of Charlottesville in 1986 entered into what is referred to as the three-party agreement. And what that agreement really did was it coordinated land use policies between the three entities. As a portion, or I should say a component of that agreement, the Planning and Coordination Council was established, colloquially known as PAC. And PAC has since that time been the entity where members of council, the Board of Supervisors, and the University of Virginia discussed. I believe right now the meeting's schedule is four times a year. The land use projects that would affect the entities themselves, most specifically the University of Virginia. This year, the PAC and a group of individuals, staff members, have come up with a new proposal. It's called the Land Use and Environmental Planning Committee. And just to give you a brief explanation, and I'll again colloquially use the acronym LUPIC. LUPIC would be maybe not the best term, maybe something better will come up, but LUPIC will ultimately expand. It will be a committee of 13 staff members from UVA, the city, the county, Ravenna Water and Sewer Authority, as well as the University of Virginia's Real Estate Foundation. It will be 13 members, and it will include one planning commissioner from the city of Charlottesville and one planning commissioner from Albemarle County. This staff-oriented body will meet to discuss not only land use issues, but also environmental and infrastructure issues that will be part of projects from the University of Virginia as they relate to its land use activities within the city of Charlottesville or Albemarle County. This body, since it's a staff body, is not subject to the FOIA meeting requirements. However, any documents that are product of LUPIC would be subject to the Freedom of Information Act's public records requirements. But in addition to LUPIC and the Freedom of Information Act public records requirements, the proposal also is going to create a biannual meeting in which all city councilors, all members of the Board of Supervisors, and officials from the University of Virginia will convene in an open public forum to discuss what projects which I think traditionally had been discussed by the PAC. At this point of the presentation, I'll turn it over to Vice Mayor Hill, and I believe Mr. Boyle as well is here.
Yeah, and I think we'll just go ahead and start if you don't mind with you, because I think you can provide the perspective of kind of overarching the journey we've been on here.
Glad to. Thank you for having me. Chip Boyle, Executive Director for the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission. Our role in this has just been to help facilitate, convene. I have participated with Mr. Mike Murphy, who at the time was the interim city manager, and Mr. Jeff Richardson, the county executive for the Albemarle County Board of Supervisors, and working with some of the administrative staff for the University of Virginia. I think Mr. Blair has described it very, very well. I do think one of the items that was very important that may have been left out was that trying to create the ability for the three entities to discuss beyond the land use planning. The original intent was around, you know, fast-growing university, fast-growing communities, and addressing the land use issues. But since that time, a lot of other things, law enforcement, safety, traffic, you name it, which was not included to be able to be discussed by PAC. So I think one of the intents was to be able to address common issues outside of what PAC would allow. The other thing that we have found, quite frankly, because we've had some questions about, you know, is this further limiting discussion? Will this have the transparency by only having two meetings a year? We went back and looked at the last several years, and given trying to pull that group of people together and sharing the management of it, the past practice has been the city of Charlottesville would oversee the meetings one year, Albemarle County would the following, UVA would the following. With all of that, this group is only average between two and three meetings a year anyway. So you aren't really having very fewer meetings than you have been in practice. So that's kind of been, you know, some of the discussion behind. They felt like it would broaden the topics, and also it would allow an opportunity, instead of two of the elected officials having to come back to the full body to talk about a major issue, you'll start by bringing that major issue up to all five members, in the case of the city council, or six members of the Board of Supervisors.
I just want to kind of go off of what you just said, please take. Major issues, I can say that the two years I've been on there, anything that's been presented to us are things that we've been already well aware of, and I don't see it as really a decision-making opportunity, but rather honestly an information sharing. And I think that's been the feedback that other elected officials I know have had. And so it was a huge reason for, you know, why I got behind us really having to relook at this, along with honestly just how narrow even trying to recommend transportation items being discussed was told, no, that's out of scope for this group. And so I think that the goal is to have more robust conversations. I think we are at a rich opportunity to be partnering with a university right now, and there's a lot of energy there. But I think that it has to take a different form, because I don't feel that this form has been working effectively. And I don't know if the mayor wants to add, given your recent time on the PAC.
Yeah, we've been having the discussion since the first meeting about, you know, how productive the meetings are not, I guess, and, you know, what we could do to make them better. There was a lot of concern, and I was one of the main people voicing those concerns about transparency with, you know, kind of, you know, breaking off like this leadership group, but then also having this kind of, you know, these joint sessions. I think because the, as was stated, because the range of topics that we would now cover, I mean, I said in the first meeting, and the first question I asked was that this was basically just a, you know, meeting for UVA to tell us what they needed. It didn't seem like a partnership, and so that was my first comment in my very first PAC meeting. And it seems like having these joint meetings could potentially open the door, one, it'll be public, all three entities will be there, and we would, you know, have an agenda that would, you know, cover a range of topics. In terms of the, you know, transparency piece, I know it was coming. Anne Malick, the Board of Supervisor, she was bringing that piece up once she came to the last meeting.
It was Liz Palmer.
Was it Liz? Okay. Once she came to, when she was at the last meeting, so just a lot of concern there. But specifically around just the staff portion of the meeting not being a public meeting. But the comments around that was that a lot of that information was the, you know, hadn't been worked through and may not have been necessarily ready, but they would provide a report, but there were discussions around what would that report, you know, look like that was, that was prepared, so.
Mayor, if I could add one other thing that I think we've, we have kind of glossed over, just haven't spoken of yet, too. One of the other things I think to address the transparency, as I did mention, each of the three entities took turns managing that year's agenda and documents, which meant they were never, documents that were presented were never in one place. And so they were very, very difficult for the public to find, if available at all, quite frankly. The Planning District Commission has offered to be that repository for the agendas, all the documents, and to manage a website so that all the documents can now be easily accessible to the general public, which I think will be a much-needed improvement over past practices.
So I have a question. So I've heard some reforms. So you've, you know, there is currently a, PAC has a tech, technical committee. I don't think it was ever 13 members, but, but it sounds like, my question then is, why not just make the PAC tech more robust? But you still have the quarterly meetings between the principals of the county and the city and the university. And then you would also, you could still have TJPDC as the repository of all those documents. So those are reforms to the existing structure that then, but without removing the opportunity of having these quarterly check-ins with the university.
Well, so the check-ins will still happen. It would just happen with the university administration, the full council and the full Board of Supervisors.
That's twice a year with everybody together. And it was hard enough to get two and two and two together.
It's been several years since there's been a full four meetings in a year.
But I mean, we're, so, and we're still going to have the summits between the city and the county?
The goal is to have four meetings with the county a year, two of which would include the university. And then we would establish those dates in, like, well in advance, and they would be set.
And then I guess the next question is, in terms of procedure, since this is going to be something that we move to change to have the full board and the full council be weighing in twice a year with the university, why, why wouldn't we have this discussion at the next joint city council summit to discuss the change with all members of the Board of Supervisors and all members of the city council present together in the same room?
Well, we discussed it as a PAC organization, and that group, I guess, became short of making a formal recommendation, but agreed that they would put this proposal in front of both bodies. So we're looking at it tonight, and the county's looking at it on Wednesday, to have a decision come in that way. Because the definition of PAC really still continues to limit us to these certain topic areas, which I think that we really-
But you could change that definition of PAC and still have the quarterly meetings with two councilors, two supervisors, and then two high-level executives of the university. I mean, I'm just not understanding why that wasn't an avenue.
I would also, I'd like to ask a question on this, which is, so we went, because when I was on, I was the representative along with, with you during the first two years. And there was a lot of debate in history about this, because, and we got a couple emails from former mayors and so on talking about it. Like, it was, it was designed to be a meeting of principals. Like, and I remember I asked Terry Sullivan, when she was the, you know, President of UVA, I said, this is something you're supposed to, it seemed like it would only be effective in the way that it was designed, which was to be a policy-making body or priority-setting body among the leaders of the organizations. And what it had become was kind of a presentational body where delegates were being sent, and that's why it feels the way that it feels, where you're kind of just receiving very pre-cooked briefings, and it's not actually the, you know, leaders of the bodies sitting there and really working over tough problems. It's more like, you know, watching a pitch deck or a deck on, a slide deck on something, and it feels not like that functional. So I, I'm, I can totally understand where the frustration is coming from, because if it's irretrievably become that, that way, which is already where, like, I spent a little bit of time trying to get it to move more toward the thing where this, where like, the city manager and the COO of the university, the president of the university would go, and they would really feel like they were there making decis, or like, or at least setting policy, working over policy. Is, and, but I haven't gone for it since you guys started going. If it's not-
Did you say the president did come?
The president came a couple of times, but only, well, in the two years, she came twice, I think, or maybe, maybe once.
She did come.
But, but it, but it wasn't, it wasn't set up to be a forum where the, where the respective leaders are actually considering or working. It was, it was just to hear presentations, and it was born, it didn't serve its purpose. So it wasn't actually anything to, like, plan and coordinate, it was kind of to hear. So I, I would think that it could only, it feel, it does feel a little, it feels like the one's kind of hasty, because it's sort of making a decision right away, but on the other hand, there's, it sounds like four, four years of it being what it ended up being.
Again, but it's like, is that a function of, of something intrinsic or something that just needs to be changed? And I'm just thinking how hard we worked to get two elected officials from each body to be seated on the CACDB, because we wanted to have a local elected presence talking directly with, you know, key stakeholders in a major industry in our community. UVA is a critical industry in our community, and it seems to me that we need to have principals from the county and the city in the room on a regular basis talking to those people.
Who is UVA sending now to it?
They send their COO. So Colette and JJ come.
Miss JJ Davis and Colette, she, who's a vice president of something.
And again, there's no reason why it can't be, the mission itself can't be broadened to be the topics of the working group of the president. It doesn't have to be restricted to zoning and land use, although, I mean, that's where decisions were made about where, how to site the JPJ arena. Those are critical impacts on, especially when that means land is being taken out of tax rules. So I just, I just, I'm having some troubles here, understanding why this, this is becoming so staff-driven, staff are to operational things.
But I think it's two parts, just like it's two parts now, but two parts that we're hoping that is more functional, and there is a goal to review the decision in a year to see if, you know, there needs to be any changes with what has been proposed. Having, instead of just two people who couldn't necessarily make a decision, having it be a public meeting where all the council was present, so if there was a vote that needed to be taken, you know, all of county, all the Board of Supervisors and the leadership at UVA who could make some decision, if there was a vote needed, that we needed to take, we would have the ability to, to do that. And I think now, having the option, the ability to help craft the agendas, you know, for the, the meeting with, you know, issues that are important, you know, to us individually and make those recommendations.
I do think that was a very important part of the discussion, is that under the new setup, this LUEC, what, the technical group, whatever the name is, they could, they could do work, they could prepare a report, they could prepare a recommendation, and they could bring that to, to one of the two joint meetings of the city council, Board of Supervisors, and the university's administration, and a decision could be made there. Under the current setup, the technical committee could bring a report to PAC, but PAC could do nothing with it. They would then have to send it separately to the city council and the Board of Supervisors.
Kind of like we are right now.
Right. And so, so that, you know, one of the goals would be that if the technical committee did make a recommendation on, on a particular issue, its very first stop would be at a place that a decision could be made if chosen.
And I had some concerns about this, the staff group, you know, and brought those up. Being able to have these discussions that were not public, and, you know, how much information from the discussion came out. And so that was discussed, and I, you know, that would be one thing that over the next year that I would definitely be, you know, evaluating, just the information that's coming out of that group and how useful and accurate, you know, it is.
I'd like to call a question. I'd like to make a motion, if we don't mind. I saw a move that we, as described in the meeting packet, dissolved the PAC, will be resolved by council of the city of Charlottesville, that the council hereby supports the dissolution of the Planning and Coordination Council.
I second it.
Any further discussion or comment?
Well, colleagues, I just, I can't agree with this. I just don't understand why. I mean, I can, so, I mean, I respect everyone's opinion, and I just want to let you know that I'm not going to be voting for that.
All right.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote for it reluctantly, because I do think that if there's been another couple of years of what I saw, I do think that it is, and it could, maybe a phoenix needs to rise from the ashes of where it's ended up for a new era of high-level cooperation. I mean, I do think, and I've talked to Dr. Richardson about this, I do think that we need very robust coordination with the highest levels of universities. Absolutely urgent, and I think that President Ryan has already been doing this a lot with the mayor, and, and it needs, and it should be structural, but I do think that this is...
I just don't see the structure yet, so.
Right.
Okay. All right, please vote. All right, that carries four to one. All right, next we have a report, the Tree Commission's Annual State of the Forest Report.
Mike, you want to do a brief intro while they're trying to get set up?
Sure. This is the annual State of the Forest, and it's traditionally been presented by the Tree Commission. They've provided updates on things they've done over the past year, on some challenges they've had, some things they're looking forward to working on in the future.
Hi, thank you all very much. I'm Paul Josie, the Chair for the Tree Commission here this evening. Our role is advisory to council, to talk about trees and how the state of the city forest is. So I'll quickly go through some of these slides and start about sort of upcoming events here. So first, we'll just start off with a few trees around town. These are images of things you may see around town. So this one here is, this is something you may recognize from Preston Avenue. This is right across from, from Mona Lisa Pasta. This is in January. This is how the, we actually drove by this, we drove by this in January and saw that, let's see if I can get this to be full screen. All right, well, this was, so anyway, there's some utility work you can see going on nearby. This was one of those projects where you- Uh, this was one of those projects where you were, um, I stopped to, to take some, to look at it. And you can look, and it's very easy to kill a tree. Uh, you can sort of see in this image here, this is just, you know, very close to these trees. This was the idea of how you're, uh, cutting around the roots. Uh, this was sort of a, a concern about the utility work done in this, so with those trees. So we wrote to council, wrote to staff, not council, and notified them the next day, uh, drove by that same site. And you can see the, uh, the trees did indeed fall down on their own accord thanks to being, uh, cut. Anyway, this is a city entrance corridor. You can see that tree right there. Actually, the trees were, um, the limbs were actually ripped from the trees by the equipment as they, uh, they, they accidentally knocked that tree down. Uh, so this happened in January. This is last week, around one of the remaining trees there. Uh, this is also your city entranceway corridor. I don't know if anyone was notified about this work. Um, and what is, you know, this is generally the approach we see sometimes with, uh, with, with trees and utilities in the city. Uh, this is another project. This is, uh, Second and Garrett Street. This is a very healthy tree that was, um, designed, the building was designed around. They removed over fifty percent of the canopy of that prod, that tree, and then, uh, they said that tree was saved. Uh, that tree, uh, you can see that, um, it has lost most of its canopy and it is, uh, but it's preserved, so to speak. They, they redid this project, uh, for a new building next to it. Um, this is, uh, upcoming. So you can see there's a proposed, um, tree protection fencing in this area, but then they actually trenched through the entire root zone of that tree, any remaining roots. They had built this wall a few years earlier, cutting off all the roots of that tree. And then they had trenched it. So this is our, our preservation. This is another, another slide. Uh, this is just, uh, the same project, actually. This is, uh, you know, more tree preservation work that's done. And it's, it's, uh, this is a problem. So, um, you know, this is where, who are you going to call, right? You know, so the Tree Commission, we're here to look at these things. It's like, what the heck? How do we help this situation? This is, uh, um, so we're looking, uh, we, we started off this year, we were really excited, um, thanks to a lot of great work from a lot of late nights and people sort of getting now the Standards and Design Manual, rewriting the, and overhaul the entire Standards and Design Manual, Chapter 10. This is, uh, the Tree and Landscape. We've changed it from, um, Landscape and Lighting Chapter. Uh, so before it was about lighting and now it's about trees. Um, so we really cleared the, clarified the language. We referenced the city's best management practices, also streets that work. So this is a really helpful document that's really clear for anyone working in the city how to, uh, work around and work with trees. So we're excited with this, thanks to the good work of, um, Mark Rylander, Peggy Van Yaris, and other Tree Commission members. Um, and also, um, Mike Ronine, the city arborist, and others from staff, Marty Silman and such. So, uh, we also submitted site plan comments on a lot of projects, uh, Belmont Bridge, Friendship Court, Kaiser Family, Seminole Square, Zeror Carlton. We're really looking at the site plans and making sure they meet city codes. So, uh, this is something that we're sort of closely looking at the, these site plans and, and really trying to catch, uh, maybe big errors and also seeing how we interpret our, our codes. Uh, we're also on a lot of, uh, steering committees, East High Street, Fontaine, Barracks Road, really advocating for trees, for root zones, uh, and for really walkable streets. Um, while we're, you know, we could be renamed the Tree and Pedestrian Committee. I think we really represent pedestrians very, uh, well. So that's one thing we're looking at, these site plans. Um, also, as a project, if, are you familiar with these trees here? This is, um, on Garrett. This is, and Streets that Work, this is, uh, set as, was one of the best streets for tree-lined streets in the city. This is our signature street. Um, in the updated, for the Phase One master plan of, uh, Friendship Court, those trees are being moved. Uh, a number of them were taken out. Uh, they're also building a parking garage right underneath these trees. So even if they're projected to stay, they're not actually saving the root zones of these trees. So like those trees that fell down earlier because they're dug too close, that's the projected, um, impact to some of these trees that are protected.
Excuse me, can I just interject something because I want to really make sure I understand this because I did pursue that question with Sunshine Mathon. And the trees were identified as being in a precarious situation. They're not identified to be taken down. They're being identified to be protected. That's what I was told.
They, they, according to the plans, say they're protected. But if you remove the root zone of a tree, it's not protected. I mean, by building a garage next to these trees that has a sheeting and shoring and you're dropping down twenty feet into the ground or more, um, you are essentially severing all root zones of those trees. So even though you're keeping the tree itself, you're not keeping the root zones of those trees. I mean, if you actually use the city's best management practices for root zone mapping, um, you would have a twenty to thirty-foot offset of, of, you know, from building phase to save those trees. So this is a, this was our challenge and why we really wanted to address in the Standards and Design Manual of how, how to make it easy for developers to read this, as well as city reviewers to read, to review this. So what's going to happen in the next phase? Are these trees protected? You know, we're spending a hundred thousand dollars on our mall trees to make sure they're well-preserved and protected. And then in our neighborhoods where we have mixed-income housing, which is, you know, two blocks away, what are we spending on our big trees here? Are we really looking after them? So these are what we're looking after, um, is what we care about, these, these spaces for these communities. This is also, um, really great work from, um, Roxanne White and others in our planning committee. We've continued to map out all the data of where trees are planted in the city, how much money is spent for these in, in the city. So, um, this is looking at our, our canopy loss in the overall city. We've noticed, uh, in ten years, we lost over three hundred fifty acres of trees roughly of canopy. This is a significant, um, loss. Yes?
Can I ask, how is that done?
This is done with, um, aerial mapping. It's, it's a grant that's provided every five years. Uh, we should have had this year, but the, the state deferred the grant until next year. So next year we'll have more data for the five-year cycle.
Okay, thanks.
Um, this is, uh, the city's comp, the 2013, uh, comp plan, goal two point two, expand and protect the overall tree canopy. This is a, a key mission, uh, that we're looking at. So we have a goal set forth for the city. Um, this is just a, a Washington Post article about shade and the value of shade in communities. Um, a lot of poor neighborhoods don't have shade. This is, uh, something found, you know, across the country. And what you see is, um, in these areas, there are heat-related illnesses that often affect kids and people over sixty-five, two key demographics we're trying to protect with shade and comfort in the communities. And so providing trees are really valuable to, to providing good, you know, um, and communities. Uh, this is just a quick example of mapping, um, temperature versus vegetation. These are correlated, uh, elements that really impact our communities. Uh, this is our goal every year is two hundred trees. You'll notice, um, each year, uh, this is looking at 2017, 2018, 2019. We're not hitting those goals for two hundred trees a year. We, uh, last year, or two, in 2018, we're actually removing more trees than we were planting. Uh, this is with our budget that's allocated through the CIP process for planting. All new tree plants are allocated through the CIP process and requested every year. So again, this is looking at, um, again, this is, that where the trees are planted, we are planting canopy trees, but we're not hitting those numbers of, uh, over two hundred. This is again, looking at those diagrams, besides the, um, the first image there from 2016, um, that we were, actually had the McIntyre Exchange project, which a lot of new trees went in. Generally, we're not hitting our two hundred goal this year. Last year we did, thanks to other projects. Uh, these are by different, uh, departments in the city. So, uh, what the Tree Commission has done is started a free tree program. We're working with, uh, the, the, uh, the CATS, the Charlottesville area tree stewards. This is a program where we actually, uh, work with the tree stewards, uh, thanks to Roseanne Simone and others in the Tree Commission, to knock on doors of streets that are missing canopy and ask if they want a tree within fifteen feet of the right-of-way. This is, we can't, there isn't right-of-way in this city. That's just a, a fact of the city. There's very little right-of-way to plant in. And so, uh, we are looking at how to do this. Independently run, raising this money through grants. Uh, this is all done through CATS and, uh, the Tree Commission. Last summer, we planted twenty-five trees. Excuse me, this is, um, how we found neighborhoods. We looked at neighborhoods that had, um, that were low, lower-income neighborhoods, that were block grant recipients. We targeted neighborhoods that had the most available, over a hundred acres of possible planting area because not everyone wants a tree. That's just a fact of it. We knock on, uh, say a hundred doors and we get twenty-five people who want a tree, a free tree in their front yard. That's a surprise to some, but, yeah, oh, but anyway. So we met with the community. We met at Belmont Park. We had this great planting day. We actually worked with the neighbors to plant in their front yards. Uh, everyone was really excited. This is a great program that we're, we put together that is really giving free trees to the community. How can we get shade back into the communities? We're doing it again this year. We have another twenty-four trees going in next for Saturday. You can join us, Belmont Park. Uh, this is a great way to see, uh, meet your neighbors and it has, uh, been very successful and we're going to keep doing it, uh, for years. So how can you help finally? This is the last bit here. Uh, thanks for staying with us. So, um, budgeting for these things. So, you know, every year we come to the CIP and say, you know, you are our sole source, the CIP is our sole source for planting new trees in Charlottesville. So fifty thousand dollars is what we typically receive. That is, uh, about a hundred and forty trees. It doesn't meet our two hundred trees a year goal. Um, so last year you helped fund a hundred thousand, or, you know, that's our goal is to go a hundred thousand for, for trees. So this is this next slide here. You know, supporting a hundred thousand dollars for annual tree plantings in the CIP. Uh, also supporting a fifty thousand dollar preservation budget related to Emerald Ash Bores. This is a, a bug that is basically killing every ash tree in Charlottesville and it is going to slowly take out a lot of critical trees, about maybe say ten percent of our canopy. Um, this is a major problem and we're already treating for it in critical trees only, but it will be losing a lot of trees and you'll see dead trees around town. This is just something that's going to be happening, so. And this is just a slide from the other day. I was driving down the street. You guys might have been sitting in this traffic too. There's these beautiful, uh, linden trees. This is again, our, our, our city corridor here, our entrance corridor. And, um, you know, I drove by and they quickly took down these lindens. I don't know who took them down and why, but, um, this is, I don't know who's reviewing these things, but this is just, yes.
Just last week, they tipped over in a storm.
They tipped over? All right, thank you.
Yeah, they were upwarded, yeah.
Well, I won't, I'll skip this. That is awful and I hope they get replanted, but anyway. Thank you.
We were all sad about that.
All right, good to know.
My favorite trees.
Thank you, yes, yeah. So, um, uh, the big, I take away from this is our final slide. I'll have a pamphlet, uh, sheet for you as well. It's just, uh, uh, we've advocated for a city forester position in NDS, basically someone who is looking at all the departments. Who is looking at what Utilities is doing, uh, Public Works is doing, who's looking at what Parks and Rec's doing, who's looking, who is thinking about the future of canopy in the city? These are big issues with climate change and other things coming around, like where is shade in our community? And Parks and Rec does a great job with our trees, but they are responding. Uh, they have, they are, you know, everyone, everyone needs staff. So we know that it is really hard to advocate for staff. And if you can't do that, the Tree Commission is still willing to review site plans, keep looking at these things. We are trying to advocate for really good site plans, good preservation planning, and great communities. So, you know, one thing that'd be helpful for us is actually to have site plans, to have us have, you know, as an optional, you know, we're not advisory. We're not, you know, sort of no pending requirements of our comments. Uh, but to receive site plans, that's really helpful for us. And right now we receive them sort of, you know, uh, when we ask for them, occasionally they show up. I mean, for Friendship Court, we got the fourth submission, you know, after requesting them for maybe seven months. You know, so it's, there's delay in getting those. So if there is a way that could facilitate the Tree Commission getting, um, site plans, that would be really helpful. I mean, as to, to really look at these without putting another staff person in there. Um, a small one, zero setbacks are really a problem with our generally five feet of right-of-way. There's just no room for trees in our communities. It works in DC because you have twenty-five feet of right-of-way, but you could have zero setbacks. Uh, but we don't have room for trees in our new developments. And then I mentioned before, the hundred thousand for annual tree planting and fifty for Emerald Ash Bore. So with that, um, quickly, thank you very much for your time this late of the hour. Any questions for you?
I do, I mean, how much, how much dialogue have you had with the Office of Sustainability? Because I, I bring that up because they're the, the office that are championing our drive to reach our, our, um, Charlottesville Climate Action Plan goal, forty-five percent reduction in community-wide greenhouse gas emissions by, uh, twenty thirty and carbon neutrality by twenty fifty, fifty. Um, and that was adopted by this council on July one this year, twenty nineteen. And again, that, and I know you know so well, uh, that the trees really suck up the CO2. So I'm, I'm just wondering, has there been any coordination, uh, with that office? Because they are moving forward with a green infrastructure plan.
There has not, and we would love to see them in a Tree Commission meeting or be a staff member in that meeting. That would be very helpful. So we would love to know who the best person to call is.
Crystal Riedewald.
And we've had Crystal come in prior years. It's been a few years, but that, that would be very helpful. Thank you for that suggestion.
So the fifty thousand dollars that is currently allocated, and then you said there is a goal of a hundred thousand dollars, but you would need what amount to plant the two hundred trees a year?
Between, um, a hundred thousand would get us between, because it's a, a bidding process, um, so that sometimes a tree, you know, last year's bidder's low bidder came at three fifty a tree. High bidder came at five fifty a tree. So it's, it varies every year. But if you, uh, if there was a hundred thousand dollars, it's roughly between, um, that you get a hundred and eighty to two hundred and eighty trees, somewhere in that range of the high-low bidder. So to, we were saying, I, I think between seventy-five and a hundred would get you two hundred trees.
But you're now planting a hundred and forty with fifty thousand.
About a hundred and sixty, yeah.
Hundred and sixty with fifty thousand.
Hundred and forty, hundred and sixty, yeah, somewhere in that range. So, is that?
All right. It was an excellent report. Thank you.
Thank you.
So very.
Thank you. Thank you, yes, and here's, there's lots of good news, uh, enclosed here of all these, you know. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all your volunteer work.
Yeah.
So now we have, um, a report presentation from New Hill Development Corporation.
Madam Mayor, uh, before the presentation begins, I know that there had been a new rule instituted and, and so it's not to be rude in case their presentation goes over. Would it be a good idea maybe now to have council vote to extend the meeting to eleven-thirty? So you wouldn't have to stop at eleven if they're in the middle of the.
I'd like to make a motion that we extend the meeting to eleven-thirty.
Second.
Praising it.
Do we need to vote?
Yes.
Okay, please vote. All right, that carries five to zero.
I'd like to make a motion for a prayer for Dr. Richardson. Two hours passed, it's a good time. Good evening.
Good evening, good evening. I know that, uh, we are standing between you all being able to get out of here and possibly get something to eat. So we're gonna not hold you terribly long. Uh, I am Melinda Harrell with New Hill Development Corporation and on behalf of New Hill, uh, I would like to say thank you uh, for the opportunity to come and present to you all this evening and also on behalf of our project team, which includes the community of Star Hill and the broader area, as well as List, Floricane, and RW Ventures. We want to say thank you for the opportunity to present this plan to you this evening. Uh, so we'll jump right into it and, and talk about, what was the objective? What is the objective of the small area plan? It's, was to develop a small area plan that is shaped by, uh, broad-based community engagement, that advances a shared vision, and a plan for an economically and culturally thriving Star Hill. Now, when we, um, made this commitment to the city to, uh, to do the small area plan, there were five things we committed to. We committed to community engagement strategy. We committed to bringing back a market analysis which identified trends, assets, and opportunities. We also, uh, uh, committed to bringing back, uh, community vision that articulated aspirations as well as initiatives derived from the community engagement process. And we also said that we would, uh, take a look at the land and the land use recommendations, including key projects, uh, in area studies. And we also said that after all of that, we would talk about resource assessments. What are some of the preliminary, uh, outlines of institutional as well as financial resources that could potentially be leveraged uh, to be able to, uh, to move some of these initiatives forward? So when you, when you look at this slide here, you see on the, on the, the circle on the side, this is what we call our concentric circle of how we, this was the theory about, of how we went about- this was the theory about, of how we went about doing our engagement. We started first with the Star Hill community, the residents and the merchants. Those that would be most affected by any immediate thing happening within their area. And then we broaden that scope to then to look at the neighboring communities, which is gonna be your Tenth and Page, West Haven, your Fifeville areas. Those, we sent out invitations to those association members, invited them to come out. But also, we wanted to go a little bit further. We wanted to look at the city, we wanted to go, take out a broader step and talk with key members of staff. We also wanted to talk with different organizations like nonprofits and faith-based community members that also had a stake in the Star Hill area because maybe they were currently working in the Star Hill area or the broader area that neighbors Star Hill. And then, of course, we wanted to take a look at the regional perspective as we went through this process. So, what was our process? Want to make clear that, make sure everyone understands, we're in the small area planning process. The implementation is another phase. So, what we, what we set about doing initially was to focus on data collection. What, what do we currently have as a region or our city? We want to review the local and regional assets, the strengths, what are our gaps? What do we have that's working, what's not working? We wanted to take a quantitative neighborhood level perspective, we wanted to look at trends. We also wanted to conduct interviews and feed, and get feedback from subject matter experts. We also took the opportunity to go back and pull some engagement notes that had happened in other public forums. So, that we wasn't completely starting from square one and really understanding what community members have been saying about this process. And then, once we started the process of the data collection, that continued through and then we began the dreaming phase, if you will. This is the vision and strategy development phase. Here is where we really started to have focus groups, talking with members of the community to really develop a high-level vision and, and some guiding principles around what could potentially happen in the Star Hill community. Through that process, we were able to determine some supporting strategies and initiatives. We also, building off of our data analysis and what we heard, we were able to look at target sectors, growth opportunities and also physical development opportunities. So, again, this was our dreaming phase. This was like for the community, don't put any restrictions on yourself to think about what the possibilities could be as you are thinking about this particular area, this forty-seven acre, forty-eight acre site. As we move, and also in this phase, this is where we, we hired our community ambassadors. This, we were able to get, we were blessed to get five individuals to come on and work with us through this process. They really did an amazing job. They were there to go door-to-door, have those front porch conversations and record that information down. Not only did they speak with the residents, they also spoke with the merchants. And so, we really wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity to give the most amount of people the opportunity to engage. So, in some places, it was meeting there where they, they already are. We knew that there was a lot of merchants in that particular area and so, some of them were not gonna be able to come to community engagement forums. During our community engagement forums, we always made sure that we provided daycare so that if there was anyone that had children or had a need for that, we, that they could feel free to come and that someone could care for their children in that process. And then, we also utilized some technology for this process as well. We worked with an online community engagement platform called Ponika. And we did that through the course of the month of July where we had various questions that we put out there that individuals could respond to and have communication around so that we could really get a sense of what the community wanted. And then, we also, after we went through the visioning phase and we really got information, key information back from the community, we then used another platform called Qualtrics, which we were able to utilize through the university to put some vision to some pictures that really highlighted what they were saying and to make sure that we were demonstrating what the community had spoken about. So, there was no confusion, like, so we basically used that platform and we disseminated that via email as well as allowing individuals, if they needed a printed copy, then we would bring that to them to participate as well. So, once we moved out of the vision and strategy development phase, that's when we got into the, the project and initiative planning phase. And that's pretty much where we're coming to the end of now. This is where we've taken an inventory of all the potential partners and champions that come, that can potentially work with the strategies and initiatives that came out of the vision. We've done initial reach-outs and discussions with these potential partners. We've, we're, in the documents that you've received, we've made land use recommendations. We've talked about density and where that needs to happen within the area. And we've also did some concept modeling, which we're gonna go through that in a little bit here as well. And of course, we did some preliminary assessments of what the available resources are that could be deployed to help with this. The next phase would then be the implementation phase. And in that phase, that's where we would get into refining the program and the model designs. We would then look to secure partner commitments as well as initiate conversations with landowners. We would develop performers and big, and business plans and we'd also be doing fundraise, fundraising in that particular phase. Alright, so, our market analysis. The market analysis, you, we provided you in the small area plan, a very comprehensive study of the market. We are not gonna get into all the details here tonight. So, what we're gonna cover is just the high-level findings from the market analysis. Essentially, what we found is that the current state and dynamics reveal that there are local assets, but there's also assets that are not being equally shared and appreciated and served by, that are in service to all. So, in Charlottesville, the Star Hill, the Star Hill area have many strengths and they have many assets. We've found that we have a strong and growing regional economy, rapid population and employment growth. We certainly have a well-sourced and well-resourced anchor institution and institutions in town. Star Hill neighborhood also has substantial residential or cultural assets. Of course, as you all know, the Jefferson School resides in the heart of Star Hill and along with a lot of their existing, that just existing fabric of the neighborhood is very historical. Some benefits, some things that we did also find that I'm sure is not any news to anyone here, that is not being equally shared, there are racial disparities in income and education attainment. We have significant gaps in support for entrepreneur, entrepreneurs and workers. Financing in particular, the various financing options. Right now, the best financing that we find for entrepreneurs, especially budding entrepreneurs, is going to be CIC, but they are capped at thirty-five thousand dollars. And so, if anyone is dreaming bigger than that, then there is a significant gap in how they're going to be able to source those funding options. We also, the programming and space became a pervasive theme that if they do have those wonderful visions and dreams that they're ready to get financed, then finding affordable space and where to do that is, is very problematic in our community. High property values, limited supply of affordable retail and commercial space and co-working spaces. And of course, as we all know, extremely tight housing market with affordability burdens across all the AMIs. So, from this, some of the key opportunities and strengths, key opportunities to strengthen the economic-social fabric of Star Hill. And, and the key word, one of the key things I want you to key in on is social fabric. Because the, the social fabric of our community really matters. It really matters about how we see ourselves reflected in the community. We have to really look at how do we provide small businesses and entrepreneurs support? Particularly to connect local entrepreneurs to high-growth industries. Some of the industries, again, that is detailed in your market analysis, that we identified as tech and biotech. We also speak to trades industry. Those are high-growth industries in this, in this area. But what we have found is that we, there's a lack of diversity in those industries. And so, how do we help to support budding entrepreneurs to, to go into those spaces? Also, how do we prepare the black workforce for next-generation jobs in opportunity sectors? How do we make sure that if they don't want to be the business owner, but they do wanna work and they wanna have a great career in these sectors, what are we doing to ensure that they are prepared to be able to participate in these sectors? And then, we also identified City Yard. The, utilized City Yard to provide additional affordable live workspace to cultivate a more equitable and connected community. And we, the last thing that we identified here was to leverage the power of the area anchor institutions to expand opportunities for small growth and career advancement. And we'll get into some of that a little bit more, but we, you do see it more detailed out in the overall plan. So, the, the vision for Star Hill, this was the community's vision. This is based off of the focus groups that we had, based off of all of the individuals that participated. This is the vision that was derived. The neighborhood vision is of a Star Hill area community whose future growth is guided by a commitment to racial, economic and social equity. We will create a neighborhood identity rooted in African-American presence and prosperity with real opportunities for the black community to foster ownership of property, commerce and culture. Now, these are, what you see above, below here are some proposals of what, what's needed to implement this vision. From an economics and entrepreneurial perspective, we need to be, the, what needs to happen is to create a visual hub for black businesses. That has to be seen. We have to see more economic activity in the black business realm. We need to be able to fill small businesses, the small business with those findings and gaps that I mentioned earlier. Support, support firm startups and growth for black entrepreneurs in targeted industries that we mentioned before. Deepen engagement and coordination with anchor institutions within the community. And we need to be able to scale and expand industry-focused workforce development collaboration and programs. We do have some programs in place, but they have to be scaled up and we have to diversify what we are focused on. When it comes to housing and connectivity, we, we have to be intentional about sustaining the existing residential core of Star Hill and we also have to grow it as well. And so, we will speak to that a little bit more as well. And then, of course, increase physical connectivity between the Star Hill and adjacent neighborhoods. That was something that really came through, is very strong in the community engagement process. Placemaking, culture and legacy, how do we see ourselves reflected in this community? We need to amplify Jefferson School as a center for the African-American public life. Strengthen Star Hill Park and other public spaces. Right now, you'll see a picture of Star Hill Park. It really is, most people don't realize it's a park if you are not in that neighborhood because it really doesn't resemble a park. And so, we're gonna speak to some ways to strengthen that, that park. And then, of course, placemaking and legacy art. How do we advance the amount of art that definitely reflects culturally and on our history, our past, our, our current day history and our, and our future? So, that's the programmatic aspect of things. Now, we're gonna transition into what is the, what, what do those programmatic aspects, how do they play out as it relates to the land? And I'm gonna let Shelley talk about that.
Thank you. So, what we want to do, once we had these kind of guiding principles and our vision and our guiding principles, we wanted to, in some focus areas, we wanted to kind of give you a big picture. That's what this character zone piece is about. The area is, I'm gonna not take for granted that everyone's aware of what this is bound by. So, on the east side, we have the Railroad Spur right along Eighth Street. We have Preston along the north, Ridge McIntyre along the east. And kind of both Main Street and the railroad, that's the dotted line below on the southern edge. The property, the Star Hill Fifty Acres does go all the way to the railroad. Some people think it just kind of goes to Main Street. But all of those are still very important boundaries. And there are also edges that belong to communities greater than Star Hill. And, and as such, they're governed by a lot of other design guidelines and documents for which we've noted in the, in the study in the back. And we took them into consideration as we looked at this. So, when you look at the core part of Star Hill, it's the orange area right in the middle. That's where the existing residential is. It's about fifty homes, eleven in the sort of condo facility right there by the, the railroad. And then, up on the City Yard site, right up very close to Preston is the SRO building of about sixty units. So, we're right in there at around a hundred housing units in the neighborhood. So, as we did our community engagement, the thing that we heard from the community is, and their biggest concern is, everything is growing up around us dauntingly, like it's, it's overpowering and we're afraid it's gonna wipe us out. That's a huge fear for these, you know, these residents in this neighborhood. So, it was with great care as we began to look at what can be done in this area for small area plan and future growth, was to give a lot of care and consideration to how things masked up and scaled next to these existing homes. Because they are very prospering residents and homeowners there and they wanna stay there. And their, their biggest fear is to being, being erased. That's a legitimate fear. So, we've done a couple of things. Over here on the side, we've outlined the remaining portion of Vinegar Hill within the Star Hill boundary. And then, we've also outlined the City Yard property, which is three colors at the moment. It's the darker blue at the top, the light blue in the middle and the orange at the bottom. But that's that kind of puzzle piece there. And so, as we began to look at, and so this is just the, the big picture, we'll get into some details in a moment. But keeping that core part, the orange of the residential, building out from there, we paid a lot of attention to scale and form. So, this project for us, as we began to look at the small area plan, was less about land use and more about form and relationship. Because what we were trying to do was really solidify community here. Because going back to the edges of this community, they belong to something else. And so, this area doesn't feel much like community unless you're living in those homes. And then, again, it's such a small footprint, that again goes to the sort of suffoc, suffocation. They feel like they're gonna be wiped out. So, we were trying to do things that would secure the integrity, shore up and strengthen and grow that. So, as we began to look at what could you do in the edges that surround it, we began to look at, let's build another layer of residential. We'll show you in another drawing, but there are, City Yard is, lets right up to Brown Street. And it's, there's a chain link there, chain link fence. That neighborhood along that street doesn't feel much like a neighborhood and it also feels very threatened. There's things that we can do to pull that back and create and, and complete the existing neighborhood and sort of give it a, a more integrous boundary. But then, as we begin to go into the blue zone, we can build something, but at a medium density. Because we've already started to create those buffers, those transition zones. And then, as you go more towards Preston, go in a higher density, which responds to all the activity and existing structures along Preston. But there's also a lot of opportunities with that too, which as we, again, go into the other drawings, we'll show you. And then, so if you begin to look at all the colors, on the eastern side of the orange is the Jefferson School. You see the footprint in there, it's a little bit darker green and going across Fourth Street, a lighter green. That's where the current Vinegar Hill Shopping Center is. And to really begin to look at creating a public square out of all of that, to begin to amplify, get back to the word, it's not that the Jefferson School is failing, it's that it's already a gem and we wanna amplify it. It's already a part of the African-American community inherent and we wanna amplify that. Like, what can we do to really say, we are here and this place is important? You can begin by really creating more of a public square going across Fourth Street, anchoring in some of that pavement, creating some green space, some place that really draws the eye inward. But also, the bright green begins to take you to the mall. We need to create more of those kinds of relationships and that get us across those, what are right now sort of more, more barriers. And then, lastly, in this big picture was to, and you can see it kind of there in the circles, a real kind of bullseye at some crossroads. All those roads I've talked about so far are on the outer edge of this community. And as I said, they belong to a larger community that has more influence over what happens there. But interior, we have the crossroads of commerce and forth. But interior, we have the crossroads of Commerce and Fourth. And they are really important to the interior circulation, and they become also transition zones for us so that we can begin to pay attention to that larger growth and its impact on the smaller density. So, they become very important inner, inner community arterial roads for us, and they kind of begin to shape up then the way that we're focusing in the neighborhood. So, with that, we, that's the bigger picture. We began to then look at three maybe areas that really became sort of center zones of that. One is the housing, and what can we do to get shore it up and to grow it? Two, what can we do then to secure that bright blue edge on that side of the housing and do other development that was suggested in the community engagement? And then, what can we do in that green area to really amplify Jefferson School? So, they became our three primary focuses, and we'll talk about the impact of those.
So, as Shelley just men- mentioned, there were, of course, three key areas that we identified. The first focus area that we're going to discuss is going to be City Yard. This is a, and of course, this is conceptual. This is the concept of what could potentially happen here. There's an opportunity to transform a portion of City Yard into a mixed-use live-work development with a variety of affordable housing options and flexible business and commercial spaces here. And then, of course, this would then be anchored by a mission-aligned tenant that could then focus on business incubation, workforce development, in the identified growth opportunities in addition to the other retail spaces that could exist there. Retail and office spaces that could exist there. So, now, down bottom where you see, in the corner under that little picture right here, those, that's the housing area. That's going to be our next area that we'll talk about in just a moment. So, with the, within the City Yard, one of the things that we, that we have proposed is that at a minimum, you could do 85. But why would you want to just do 85 units? You could do up to 255 units. And majority of those units could be affordable housing with AMIs between 50 and 80 percent. There's opportunity for considerable amount of office and retail space available there, or structured parking. And again, as I mentioned before, a mission-aligned anchor tenant that would help to really fill in the gaps of the entrepreneurial and workforce ecosystem that we identified earlier in our market analysis need, as a, as a need. And so, what would it take to be able to do this? Well, ideally, we would have to make sure, you know, you would, the city would have to make sure to have a mission-aligned development partner. That's going to be very key to this being able to be realized. And of course, there's going to be a need for private development financed because it is a mixed-use construction. But depending on how deep we want to be able to get with those AMIs and affordability, that is going to determine how much additional funding that we may need. So, there will be some gap in the financing, but that's where we can make that up through philanthropic and public sources to be able to get us to the level of affordability that we need in this particular area. And then, of course, there's opportunity for business planning and program development here as well. Now, in the bottom, again, we talked about those little small houses.
Yeah. So, I think it helped frame that next one for folks. So, one of the things, again, we said it was conceptual, while, while anything can be done here, one thing of note, you can see it up there in the corner, is what we have kind of created as roadways through this is taking into consideration the existing easements, which upon initial review with staff and engineers, they're pretty hefty and be very expensive to relocate, if they can even be relocated. So, while we can have big picture ideas, we thought, let's take a look at something practical. What would something that could be done look like? So, we've given consideration to the easements. They've become the roadways because you wouldn't be able to build over those. You could pave over them, you can green over them. So, what that began to do was some layouts and pretty nice land. Three swaths up there that we're looking at being sort of development tracks. And to the point earlier about meeting some of the community vision and need, mixed-use development, you know, met the need for the hubs, the business, the storefront, the housing, all of those needs. We didn't pick one, we looked at what if we did them all? And, and then, to, and then to the next one, we'll speak to the other tracks. But in particular, I want to look at, up there by the railroad, what I was talking about earlier about that density, that would be the dark blue area. Crossing over that railroad would be the Preston swath. And, and so, if we built something to the rear of the site like this, where you built the density high, you could actually come off the back edge onto the Preston site. Now, I don't know if y'all are familiar with the Preston site, but right now, it's, it's got limited access. Only one curb cut or two curb cuts from Preston. But it's landlocked and raillocked all the way around it. If we built in the rear of the site up by the, what could become a trail, a rail-to-trail, we could actually come out the backside of buildings onto the Preston site and increase the circulation and therefore the viability of any of the prosperity that could happen up there.
Can I leave you a question?
Yeah.
So, just to move forward on to the, the next focus area, as Shelley mentioned earlier, the first area was focused on the, the City Yard itself. But we also are suggesting that a portion of City Yard could also be utilized to help infill on Brown Street. And this is just a sampling of what some of those, what that infill could potentially look like on Brown Street. And the concept for that is to be able to really create an opportunity for single-family, first-time homebuyer opportunities. And to also, the other thing that we wanted to, to focus on in this area is, how do we alleviate some of the vehicular and parking pressures within Star Hill and increase pedestrian connectivity, which Shelley alluded to just a moment ago as well? So, when we look at this particular area, again, Shelley mentioned about the, the chain link fence. If that fence could be moved and we could utilize, we could subdivide that land, we could then go ahead and infill along Brown Street and create any, you know, create single-family homes anywhere from 10 to 46 with the majority of, with, most of it being single-family attached. But then, you could do some multifamily as well, maybe on the backside of those as well. But again, the idea is creating first-time homebuyer opportunities. That was something that we really heard strongly from the Star Hill residents that they would like to see in those homes there. And then, of course, Shelley also mentioned that there would be, talking about just the pedestrian connectivity. One of the things that came out that we, we really need to do is, we need to be able to calm the, the streets so that they become more pedestrian-friendly. You've got some really, along the edge of this, of Star Hill, you've got some pretty sizable crossings like Preston, for instance. And so, how do we make that a little bit more pedestrian-focused and so that it really draws attention to the pedestrians, so we can make it safe for pedestrians to be able to cross in this area? And then, also, she mentioned as well as, when it comes to connectivity, talking about the support of the, that rail-to-trail piece, that piece that goes right behind Reeds, for those of you that are familiar with it, that basically is not really in, in much, it's not in use. And so, what can we do differently with that? And Shelley, did you want to add something here?
Yeah.
Do I want to just have a quick question?
Yes, ma'am.
Who, does the city currently own that one?
Yeah. It's part of City Yard, so I'll address that now. That's the two-shaded area down there below. So, you see how there's, it's a big tooth, right? So, so there's, that's okay, I just don't know how well I can hear it. So, so there are current houses on either side of that gray area, and the chain link literally goes up to the road. And there's not even a sidewalk there. And you can see through it, it's just parking. It's just pavements where trucks are parked. The, the building is back up on what we proposed as focus area one. So, that gray area right there is just, it's all parking for vehicles. And as far as environmental, which we included a summary of the report from staff, yes, we don't have at this pulse, we don't have limitations that would prohibit any kind of housing or whatever. But certainly, the gas facility was up along Fourth Street and the jail to the rear by the tunnels. So, this gray area, gray hatched area that we've got there doesn't have any kind of environmental concerns. So, for an immediate action, you could subdivide this land, take those patches of the City Yard, pull the chain link back and begin to build housing. So, you know, some housing that could front on Brown, and then you, you let the road curl back around and you put some on the backside and you begin. And those all become the natural buffers because, again, we're talking about playing up to what's already an easement. And so, the other, sorry, I'm talking with my hands. But the other zigzag you see there is the parking deck and other things that are already exist in form. And so, all we're trying to do is sort of begin to create forms that help make the transition between the single-family homes within the existing community and what could begin to step forward, go taller. You saw the pictures, you know, in the previous slide. So, so the idea of going back, if you take the 10 acres you currently have, those two swaths that we've just done, pretty much divide out as one-third, two-thirds. So, this is one-third, it's around three and some odd acres, call it four, or call it three, it's closer to three. And the other one, two-thirds, it's six, almost seven acres. If you take the current zoning and you take 21 units an acre, you could get in like 218 units. By the time you combine the two things that we've, we've noted, it's more like 300. But that just relates to the massing we've shown you by the heights, by the footprints and all that. So, we're just, just so you know where the numbers come from. What we've shown you in an illustration here is about 300 housing units total. And like I said, it is over the current, what you could currently do by right. But with an SUP, you've already acknowledged in your own ordinance that you can go higher, right? And I just want to add the caveat right here that we're also not proposing that to use the current zoning instruments you have. What we are saying is, what we are saying though, is we're trying to point out, and we're not going to do it all in this conversation, but we've tried to point out in the small area plan where you need, where parts of it work and where we need some new designation. We need a new residential designation here because if we're going to go for first-time homebuyers, the, the land, the parcels need to be a little smaller than what the R2 and R3 allow. And we want to be able to build to the streets, and we want to be able to look at some, some ease in some of the side yards and, and those types of things. And I think it's really important because you have such an odd little area here, but yet it's so important to the integrity of the existing residential fabric, to shore that up and secure it for them. And why first-time homebuyers? Because of all the reasons, you know, of people moving in and taking up lots and combining them and building large structures that, again, lead to the major concerns that we heard from the community. So, if we were able to do something in smaller lots and different, in smaller home sizes, and then it would be market entry for first-time homebuyers. And then, we're beseating the future of the community versus taking more seasoned kind of folks and moving them. So, those are some of the things.
And so, as you can see on here, we also put on what would it take? You know, again, we've already mentioned these things, subdivision of the land, obviously, a mission-aligned development partner would be necessary, private development financing for the residential construction, of course. Again, depending on the subsidy, or depending on the affordability, the amount of subsidy that would need to be raised for this. Now, some of the things that Shelley talked about really leads into our last area that we focused on, which was the Jefferson School. Now, this area here, this really helps to anchor the, the community. It's, the Jefferson School, the concept here is to establish Jefferson School as the central focus, which we talk about with that, that square that is outlined here that we're looking, that we're proposing should be created. And we want to reinforce the sense of history, want to look at reinforcing sense of culture and identity in place throughout the neighborhood. So, not just here, but throughout the neighborhood so that it goes not only through the Jefferson School, but out into the community so that we get more of a sense of culture in place. And so, I'm going to let Shelley explain some of the concepts around what we were able to identify in partnership with the Jefferson School Foundation in terms of ideas that, of things that could be done to enhance this area.
So, back to the previous picture about the public square, and we mentioned it in that bright green sort of rectangle when we were looking at the character zones. But to, to take the Jefferson School driveway and re-landscape the retention pond inside, it's a little overgrown and masking of the entrance. But then, to extend it across Jefferson's, I mean, across Fourth Street and in front of the current Staples Building, all you're talking about doing is recontextualizing blacktop pavement. And we can do it with green and walk and still park the cars and do all that, but it's more intentional. And we're suggesting you do that because it really expands the footprint and reclaims that part of Vinegar Hill that we had the opportunity reclaim without even owning, you know, the land. And then, I think that, you know, those kinds of things with landowners to be able to partner with. But it also is that direct swath going across to the mall, which is really important to connect to other parts of the city when we were talking about crosswalks and things. So, in addition to that, this speaks to the crossroads of Commerce and Fourth, and that really sets the trajectory of the focus inward to the rest of the community that we want to continue to grow and expand because everything that falls to the other side of it really, as I said, belongs to other parts of other larger communities. And so, one of the things we also heard was places to really, going to the social network that we were talking about earlier, there was some requests for more outdoor spaces where Star Hill Park is lovely, but it's one park. You know, and there's no place for the community to just go and sit for free and enjoy the outside where they don't have to pay $20 for a drink and be told to leave in 30 minutes because they need to turn the table. You know, to create, to take more opportunities in spaces we already have and make them more publicly inviting. So, let's put benches on our streets and let's put more shade to the conversation earlier, more places to pause and really take Fourth and, and Commerce and turn them into more pedestrian pathways that have vehicular access on them and convert them from roadways where people dare to, you know, to dare to walk. Let's turn them more into people's spaces. So, it's the social spots in, in addition, like outdoor performance spaces. So, little amphitheaters can be done right there in the corner of the Jefferson School to be able to create, add two more layers of parking on top of the parking deck, structurally sound enough to do that. Just ran out of money before. But to be able to look at opportunities to do that and then green them, green the sides, green the top, make the top another usable space, a park, if we, even if there can be something constructed on it. Take some of these blank walls and murals on them. I mean, that's the wall you see down there on the, on the Citizen Link Building, Century Link Building. When you walk out of the front door of the Jefferson School.
African-American.
African-American Center, right there on Commerce Street. You just stare at that wall, it's like, wouldn't it be lovely to, you know, be able to create more murals and things like that? We're in conversations, we've approached Quark to create, you know, to begin to look at connectivity from theirs right there on Sixth and Commerce and how that might lead to the Jefferson School and really begin to look at the inner dynamic of the places there. But everything we're going to do to build community isn't about brick. You know, some of it's about the mortar. And these are some of those things, the social fabric, the, and all the cultural and placemaking things that we can do. So, these are just some of those examples.
All right. And so, to kind of get this wrapped up here for you, what are the next steps? We are, again, the next steps is implementation. We've gone through the small area planning phase. Of course, New Hill is going to continue to work. We're going to be moving forward with our partnerships that we have already started to formulate, and we're going to continue to shore those up. We're going to continue our ongoing conversations with key champions such as Jefferson School Foundation, UVA. And then, we're also going to look to revitalize in our advisory committee. We identified some individuals early on that we felt like could help to perhaps, perhaps form a governance structure to make sure that these particular initiatives are ushered forward and they eventually will come into fruition. Some short, short-term focus areas that we've identified based off of the three focus areas that we just spoke to, support cultural, cultural concepts inside and outside of Jefferson School. Those are some small things that we can go and get started with, including that public square, the amphitheater, look to implement the pocket parks that were identified in the plan, identify short-term space options to locate small business and incubation space. And then, of course, what can you do as council? And then of course, what can you do as council? Well, the first thing is to endorse the small area plan. Resolve to attach the small area plan to the comprehensive plan. And then of course, some low-hanging fruit items that you all could, to look to support or enforce is the implement, implement parking by, or excuse me, enforce or implement parking by permit only. One of the things that we heard loud and strong was the parking is really unbearable in the Star Hill neighborhood, and so we need to have some enforcement there that could be done immediately. Implement Star Hill Park improvements, that's something that's easy to go ahead and get started on as well. Endorse and implement the rail to trail conversion, and I believe that those talks are underway. Implement street calming enhancements that we spoke to earlier. Again, those things are just really small things that can be implemented. And of course, you can also go ahead and subdivide city yard for the focus area too, which is the residential housing. And that's going to conclude our presentation, and we are available for questions.
Thorough and extensive, to say the least. I had a couple of questions, if my colleagues don't mind. I know that we're running up on time, so I will try to be as brief as possible. Is that okay with you all? So, thank you again, Ms. Harrell and Shelley, and then all of the New Hill crew, everybody had their T-shirts on. I see you guys brought out the big guns. We see you, Mr. Jones, how you doing, sir? Thanks for joining us. This is really, y'all mean business tonight. But I had a couple of questions. So, one, thanks for the update, it was helpful, but I'm interested in the participation that you had in the community, from the community. I know I participated in some of the discussions and you had several community meetings, but can you tell us overall what the demographics were of the people who you interviewed and who you talked to while putting together the small area plan?
Absolutely. And of course, we actually have pictures of that identified in your plan itself that demonstrates some of the the groups that were there. But John Survey, who is here this evening, he conducted, he and Ebony helped lead the, all of the community engagement efforts.
Ebony Bug.
Ebony Bug, yes. Not Ebony Bug, Ebony Walden.
Walden. We love Ebony Bug too, but Ebony Walden.
Confusing me. So John, yeah, John, let me just answer.
So I think two things. So on page 10 of the document you have in front of you, there's an overview of the community engagement process, and then at the very back of the document, there is actually a listing of all the organizations and entities who are engaged. So upwards of 100-plus organizations were involved, but that concentric circle that Ilan had talked about earlier, we really started with the residents. And so we had the community ambassadors go out, they went door-to-door to all of the homes, all the private residences within the Star Hill community, they went door-to-door down Main Street and in Vinegar Hill Shopping Center with the merchants one-on-one and spoke with the folks there. The, kind of going out from there, we were really interested because really the focus initially around community engagement was, we wanted to really hear from the African-American community of Charlottesville. And so the next step out were the adjacent neighborhoods of Rose Hill, 10th and Page.
Fifeville.
Fifeville, thank you. And.
West Haven.
West Haven, thanks. And then we also invited in a group, we actually met several times with groups of Black entrepreneurs and business leaders in the community to really understand those perspectives, perspectives historical, from folks who knew and remembered and were attached to the history of Vinegar Hill, and perspectives of a new generation of leaders who are coming in the community and looking for places where they could establish businesses that really reflected their passion, their identity as Black entrepreneurs, and their attachment to the Black and African-American community.
Okay.
In particular. And then the third kind of concentric circle out was then we wanted to talk to the nonprofit leaders in the community who were actively engaged on the ground in Charlottesville, working with entrepreneurs, working with housing, working with sort of urban renewal and with city government leaders. So meeting in two-on-ones with many of you, meeting with department heads from the city. Sort of that comprehensive cascade out was started with the residents and blew out from there. And then our partners from RW Ventures, who were doing the economic analysis, were coming from the other direction. They were started actually with the Go Virginia initiative, with the Virginia Chamber of Commerce, and then came in at a regional level to look at the economic snapshot and talk to the folks and the organizations, university and other partners, who really engaged in the economic conversations around, you know, what was it from an economic and financial development and job perspective that was available or needed in the broader community? And how then could activities at Star Hill support job creation, job growth and job training, not just for the residents of Star Hill, but really to be that magnet that pulled African-American and people of color into the Star Hill community to learn trades, to learn crafts, to start up their own businesses?
Okay.
Is that?
Yeah, no.
Just touch on many of your things?
Yeah, all of them.
Yes. So it was a lot of conversations, and it started in April. We wrapped up, I think, our last community discussions in early September. So we were engaged all through the summer.
A long time. I just got a couple of really quick questions. Hope they'll be quick. So, there's been a lot of talk, just being candid, I'm about the amount of money that was provided, or granted rather, to New Hill. So can you all kind of explain the return, the yield on the return? And like, what kind of, what do we get back? What does the city get back as a whole from the $500,000?
Well, I mean, at the end of the day, the small area plan really speaks to what the potentials are for the return for the city. So if you, I pulled it up on the slide here, that, things that we've identified in the, based on the concepts that we put forth here. So the, if these concepts are put into motion, then there is great opportunity where you can have additional 300 units of housing that could be majority affordable. You could have a sizable amount of commercial and retail space, again, being able to incubate small businesses and really being able to lift those startups off the ground. 1,400-plus jobs, not all of those are net new. Those are, some of those are going to be jobs that are supported, but you're going to have construction that would be, construction jobs. And then of course, there would be jobs created through the anchor tenants as well as retail space and of course, establishment of new businesses in the area. And of course, then that translates into millions of dollars from a labor perspective. And of course, this is all based off of the modeling that we did off of the concept. These are not hard, fast numbers, but this is the potential. And so our goal with this process was to identify and to really hone in on what is the potential. We have this space that's right here in the heart of our city that is not fully utilized. And we have a housing crisis, we have many of our, members of our population, especially from the African-American community, that do not feel like that they are truly being seen, heard, and that the opportunity to progress is really there and that those pathways are being laid plain. And so this is what we were able to do with this work, to identify how we can lay those things plain and how we can move forward in making sure that the path that we're on makes sense.
So when you bring in someone like Lisk, and I just saw, I just read, if I'm not mistaken, they're doing something in the Norfolk region, you guys are like investing $100 million or something like that down in the Tidewater. I'm hoping that, you know, we can get a similar initiative or project going on in Charlottesville. So, I hope we can help in that regard, Mr. Jones. And it's twofold, you can answer that, feel free. But then it's really impressive, just, and I'll shut up on this, but it's really impressive just to see the thoroughness of the small area plan from my perspective and the amount of work that's been put in, in such a small area, a small amount of time, especially considering when you look at like the Cherry Avenue Small Area Plan, which is, has been going on for much longer and in a much smaller period of time, you all have been able to do this. I'm elated with the work that you've been doing, I'm really glad to hear about the return on the investments. And I hope that Lisk sees the city and I hope the city sees Lisk as a partner with New Hill in the terms of what we're looking to do moving forward. And we've reached those goals you all have talked about.
And I'd also, Dr. Bellamy, I'd like to chime in, and I would love, Mr. Jones, good to see you again, it's been a long time since the Warner administration. I would, I would love to hear about Lisk's potential role in this and how you see it, because I know that that was one of the reasons that I was excited to support this in the beginning, was the platform that you all would bring to the community in terms of experience and capital and, you know.
So, good evening.
Good evening.
And nice to be with you, Madam Mayor and all, all members. We're excited about the opportunity to work in Charlottesville in partnership with you all, in partnership with Ilan and team, in partnership with others that that we see within the community. You're right, we just announced a $100 million partnership with Centerra Healthcare, which by the way, has a hospital here.
Right.
At the Jefferson.
Okay, I hear you talking.
And so.
Oh, in the area, at the Jefferson, okay.
So I'm just suggesting that it's not just Hampton Roads. Actually, it's, it's where they have assets.
So you're suggesting 200 million in Charlottesville, starting with Centerra and New Hill?
You should be in a different. So, look, I, I think the opportunity for us here is to be part of putting together the capital stack to do the work. And that includes philanthropy, that includes resources with, in this market as well as resources without, as well as resources. So we committed 50 million of that 100 million in Hampton Roads that we're going to invest as well. So there's no question that part of what I can see us partnering on is amassing the private sector capital stack that's needed to do this work, hopefully in partnership with the city. As well as technical assistance, as well as trying to bring to the table the best practices that we've seen elsewhere across the country in doing this. But going back to the, the original question that you asked, it all starts with the plan.
Yeah.
Right? And, and so then the real return on investment is a plan that you can aggregate investors around. So this is obviously tens of millions of dollars of potential investment in this area for the city. So, that's what we hope to be able to do.
Could, would you mind if I, colleagues, if I, just one other question? And this is something that brought up in, with Ms. Harrell when we talked the other day. And I know that there's like a cart before the horse, it's such a complicated, multi-layered project, and I really appreciate the low-hanging fruit part here. I think that's very savvy to start to think about how does, would some parts of this move? We have had a lot of difficulty in the city moving with bigger projects, especially when they're capital intensive. So, long wind away of getting to, the big problem we have in our economic picture is significant tranches of jobs for people who don't have college degrees. That would be the biggest way to break the endemic cycle poverty that you have in the underclass at the Orange Dot Project. And one of the, I've always thought one of the biggest ways to deal with that would be to go to establish anchor employers, who could come in and say, we will be able to, like many other industries have done, guarantee and link up with PVCC and whatever, and not just have to do, you know, smaller dozens, but you really could say. And I'm, it's a very general, I guess what I'm curious about is are there examples elsewhere? Are there prospects? UVA, because you're on the board there, I mean, it really could be. It seems like the stars would be more aligned and the publicity that Charlottesville's had for that to happen in a way that has not happened in the past, but you wouldn't, you know, this is very expensive real estate, because it's a block from the downtown mall and.
I'm just going back.
You know, so, so I'm, it's a, I'm curious about your, in the minute we have left, take on concentrated, significant numbers of jobs with an anchor or anchor employers who we have not been able to do in the past.
I think it's a big opportunity. I'll give you just one example. So we have a partnership with Union Pacific Railroad, which is now the largest railroad company in the country. And what we're doing with Union Pacific, and they're doing it in a handful of markets, they are facing a situation where they don't have enough employees to fill jobs that are being vacated by retiring employees in their rail yards. These are jobs that do not require four-year degrees, but they are jobs that will require apprenticeships, maybe some credentials and certifications and licenses. And we're working directly with them with a curriculum jointly produced by them and us to actually prepare people to work in their rail yards in Chicago, in Kansas City, in LA, and one other market. So the answer is, yeah, we, we see the opportunity to work with anchor institutions around jobs that they're having a hard time filling, that don't require four-year degrees, but pay quality wages and provide people with living wage jobs and careers to get people prepared to work in those, in those vocations and those jobs in concert with the employers. Absolutely. That's a big opportunity.
Thank you.
So, just real quick, I think we need to vote to extend the meeting.
Yeah. So. I move to extend the meeting?
15 minutes?
Prob, well, we probably should just play it safe and do 30, because we have two more items.
Don't open your birthday anymore, so.
Okay. So 30 minutes?
Yes.
All right. Okay.
And I, may I walk by me? Again, thank you for this excellent report. I just, as a small area plan, I mean, it is giving us a blueprint for what to do in this area that's kind of like a nexus of so many different neighborhoods. But I'd just like to point out that when I was looking at the numbers, I mean, you've quadrupled the density of this area just by working on the city yard. That's 10 acres. And you did it in a way that preserves the integrity and, and physical integrity of the neighborhood that's there. So to increase density, increase numbers of units that we desperately need without destroying the physical fabric of what's there and beloved is just truly appreciated and remarkable. My one question would be, are there plans moving forward to do the same level of intense density studying and market feasibility on the city yard for like, what is the Vinegar Hill Shopping Center area? Because in your report, you identified them as both being underutilized. So that would be just one question. And at some point, the community benefits agreement that you bring up is critical because that's where you can tie hiring, 15% of your minimum would be to African-American local people. And as this third party, unlike a city, you can do that. So I think that was an important tool that wasn't getting popped out, but it's something that I, I just wanted to underscore. So I just, so just a quick question, and then I, I would like to then make sure that before we, we end this discussion, that we give clear direction to our attorney as to the, to, to prepare a resolution for us to have this sent to the Planning Commission for amendment to the conference plan. But that's after, you know, the discussion about whether or not you're going to look into this Vinegar Hill name, shopping area at any point.
So what we, what we discovered when we were going through the process and we were looking at the, the various underutilized spaces, and when we looked at the easements and what that totaled up to from an acreage standpoint, the two areas essentially total up to about, to roughly the same amount of usable acreage. And so what we decided to do is then just focus on one area. So do our modeling and our concepting on that one, because obviously then you could just replicate the, ideally replicate the type of modeling on the other, because it's the same roughly the amount of usable acreage. And so, obviously with the city yard, you know, it's, it's a little bit easier to kind of model on that simply because there's no displacement of, obviously there would be displacement to the city, but you don't have the same issues with having more than one landlord. So we wanted to, to look at that space and because it, it was also one of the things that we heard over and over from the community members as an area that needed to be identified. And even in our conversations with the Planning Commission and their community outreach, they heard that come up over and over again as well, was the city yard is a very underutilized space, and could we look at doing something? So we thought that to focus our, our efforts on creating concepts and models around that, and then of course, then that could then be broadened out.
And I think, I think to that point, I mean, there's no denying the fact that this space is underutilized, and we're just, just to be frank, we're not getting the quote-unquote best bang for our buck with how we're currently using the space. I know there's been some discussion in the past about the price tag and how much it may cost to be able to look at the ground, do the studies, move what we currently have there and whatnot. But I would be really interested in having a new study done to see what it really would take to bring something like this to fruition. Because I, I was visiting Omaha, Nebraska, and they did something very similar to, literally almost the exact same thing to what New Hill is looking at proposing, and the cost was about $40 million cheaper than what we've heard in terms of prior estimates and what it would cost. So, you know, I think that, that kind of study needs to be done now, and if we have a true number, I think that's where we can leverage someone like Lisk and their ability to raise capital. And also, you know, utilize all of the spotlight that our city has at the moment to be able to do something that's going to have a tangible, longstanding impact on the community. A decision like this and what we're doing now and the foundation in which I think the city in New Hill enlists. A decision like this and what we're doing now and the foundation in which I think the city and New Hill and Lisk is building is something that transcends this council and even the next council. This is a generational kind of shift that I think has the potential to be done. So I'll leave it at that.
So I, I, I just have one comment, um, tonight. The AMI range from the fifty to eighty percent, just the possibility of looking at expanding that. When we talk about the public housing serving primarily up to thirty percent, there's that gap between the thirty and fifty. And if, um, you know, we can look at how to incorporate that into this plan, that would, um, you know, I would like to see that.
Absolutely. And one of the things, again, we, this, these were just concepts and models. And when we talked about the AMIs, we looked at what some of the other organizations were focused on from an AMI perspective. And so we thought we had gone low enough to kind of pick up where some of those other areas are leaving off. So that we can kind of, again, the idea is to create a continuum of housing so that people can, as their wages increase, they have other housing options to be able to move into. But that's a, a point well taken. Uh, when we were talking with, um, Callie, who's with Lisk, and she was talking about like financing opportunities for the portable housing. That typically it needs to average out to like a sixty percent AMI in order to get the type of light tech funds and things like that, and light tech credits. And so that would allow us to go a little further. So that, again, ideally, the goal is to have this mixed income and we can create continuum in place for individuals to be able to, to grow into their housing needs.
I like that.
Um, Mayor Walker, I'm just, if I may, that one of their next steps is to make sure that this gets, um, appended to our comprehensive plan. And in order to, uh, in order to do that, it does require an active council. Council can initiate as a comprehensive plan amendment. The planning commission can also at any time. But in order to do that, um, we do need to give, we need to pass a resolution. And I would like to get some consensus or majority of council, um, to agree to have Mr. Blair prepare a resolution for our next meeting. That would append this to the, direct the planning commission to review this.
So would that happen outside of the comprehensive plan changes that we are, we have the RFP out?
Happening to the existing con plan.
Um, amending that?
Yes. And it, I mean, the plan itself provides direction to what new zoning could and should be. So it's not like it's, um, counterproductive to that other process going on. In fact, it informs it.
But is there a reason not to do it in, um, to not do it with the work that will, that we have the RFP out for, for the comprehensive plan?
I think if we're being honest, we don't know when that may come to fruition. The timeline on that is so ambiguous.
By the time the con plan's updated, um, and the housing strategy's put in place and the zoning rewritten, it could be three years.
Well, hopefully not.
I mean, when you think about, you know, sixty-four hundred acres as opposed to forty-eight. And then this was the, the community that was feeling most threatened.
But if it was time to, I mean, if there was movement on this, we could do, we wouldn't have to necessarily have this, um, like outside of the comprehensive plan to then vote.
Well, we already have an active comprehensive plan.
That we all have agreed upon needs to be changed.
And so this would just be an add-on to it. So I, I would, I would like to move that we give direction to our city manager. That's.
Yeah. But before you do that, I, I mean, we do have Alex here. So I'd just like to see if, how would that fit into the overall, uh, comprehensive plan?
Good evening, councilors, or good morning.
Don't you wish that on the.
Uh, we already have existing, uh, comprehensive plan. So if, uh, uh, the city council votes tonight or at the next council meeting to transmit, um, a request to, uh, the planning commission. Then the planning commission will consider it and then, uh, move forward to amend the comprehensive plan and then incorporate this, uh, into the comprehensive pa, plan. Then it becomes part of the comprehensive plan. However, uh, it's gonna take, I think, uh, once the council acts on this, uh, it takes, I believe, hundred days for the planning commission to complete that, uh, exercise.
It says in the, it says in the ordinance sixty days, but yeah, probably ninety days, hundred days to actually literally get it done, but that's.
Right.
Right.
Yeah. But that, you know, that's why it's kind of important to start next meeting.
I'm trying to understand what work is involved at the staff level at this stage versus if we were to be doing it when we're looking at the comprehensive plan rewrite. Like the next version of the comprehensive plan and having that. And this isn't the only thing that we're looking at, changing, you know, hopefully sooner versus later. I'm just trying to understand how much rework that's gonna require of staff.
For?
If we were to adopt this plan and then what, what then trickles down that has to be done to, to do so? And then versus if we were to wait, as Mayor Walker's alluding to, for the, for what we've just had this RFP response back for. And we actually went through the housing strategy and, and had this be a consideration of that.
Well, if we have to wait, uh, then we have to wait, uh, based on the schedule for completion of the comprehensive plan. And, uh, the consultant for the comprehensive plan update will then walk this particular plan, you know, into the comprehensive plan. One thing I need to point out is, um, the, usually when we have a comprehensive plan, um, I mean, a small area plan. Appropriate city departments tend to take some time to review it and make sure that the provisions and recommendations in the plan, you know, um, will not have any adverse impact. They provide comments, and then the consultant will take the comments and make amendments. And then after that is done, then we move it to the, um, uh, planning commission. But in this case, that hasn't been done. You know, um, uh, in the, um, five, um, Cherya Venice small area plan, we have a, there is a technical committee, which is composed of representatives from appropriate city departments. So every draft comes to them, you know, every department, park and rec, NDS, public works, public utilities, police department, everybody reviews that. Then it goes back to the Thomas Jefferson, uh, uh, MPO, which is the consultant. So they make revisions and then it comes back again. But this plan hasn't gone through that, you know? And, uh, if council votes to transmit it to, uh, um, to the planning commission, you know, uh, the statutory date, you know, uh, provided for us to review it may be real hard pressed on staff.
So if the, this plan went to the departments and through that process and then to planning and then back to us. When the zoning changes, when the comprehensive plan, um, the new process took place, then that wouldn't have to be done again?
Yeah, we can, we can actually, we can let the consultant know, we have a document, a draft document, uh, that needs to be incorporated. And they can, uh, 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 take that into consideration as the stage, the big project.
But I do think it's important that staff weighs in on this plan if they haven't looked at it at all. I mean, I think there's, that's some important steps just to get that feedback, because I'm anticipating there would be some modification. So we couldn't just adopt this plan as it's written because staff hasn't even.
But that's why we're giving it to the planning commission.
Right. The planning commission. Oh, sorry, Mr. Blair, go ahead.
Just as Mr. Icafona is still up here, the ordinance says that if it's referred to the planning commission, that the planning commission would have to have a public hearing within sixty days after such request. Or such longer timeframe as the council may specify in the written request. And I think, to your point, Alex, about wanting departments to take a look at this before getting to the planning commission. Could you give the council a timeframe for that before you would, you know, let's say November eighteenth, if the council passes a resolution? How much time would departments need to look at it before you would want it to go to the planning commission?
Yep. You have to give them at least, uh, thirty days to review it and provide comments. And then if they do, then the comments will be provided back to the consultants for revision. You know, so that's where the city council has to be very generous in terms of the time, the timeline they are giving to staff. To enable the correct, the review by the appropriate city department and the comments feedback to the consultants. And then the consultant makes the revisions, you know, and then resubmits it. And then for, then there will be a planning commission workshop. And then the consultant will also be available at the, that workshop, just in case if the planning commission has questions, just like, uh, the city council. Then after the workshop, then it's placed on the planning commission agenda for public hearing. It'll probably be a joint public hearing between the city council and the planning commission. And subsequent after that, it goes to the city council for final adoption.
What, a hundred and twenty?
Hundred and twenty?
Hundred and eighty?
Probably between hundred and twenty and hundred and eighty.
And I think one twenty will suffice, because that.
So once this process is done, that's just what I'm trying to make sure. And this new comprehensive plan, because we can start this process now and then whatever is approved can just be added to the new comprehensive plan. And the zoning changes can be made around it.
Absolutely.
That's correct.
Absolutely.
All right.
This is not new zoning at all. Just be advising on where the zoning.
No, but if there needs to be changes, then this would help.
Absolutely.
Influence those changes, recommendations in a new comprehensive plan.
Exactly. That's why it's kind of important that it happens now.
So what's the, what's the appropriate direction right now, John, that we're trying to give? Because it's not at a point where it's something that we can adopt, because there's some back and forth that needs to happen with staff. I'm just not clear on what we're actually able to direct at this moment or at the, in two weeks from now.
Well, I think what, based on the conversation tonight, I'll come back with a resolution for council to refer this to the planning commission. To have a public hearing on it within a hundred and twenty days.
But we, couldn't we go from the departments, the other route that he just mentioned? Like the departments and the consultants could work together on this, the first review of it? And then it would go to planning commission after that?
I think that, right.
That's why he's giving it more time, I think, so that they can do that cycle.
Right. This would give an additional sixty days to go through that.
Which allows the staff to be able, the staff and the consultant to work together to review it and have the time for the planning commission. So everybody wins.
Yeah, I just think it's important to hammer some of that stuff out before we are having public meetings to, if there's anything that's in there that.
And it could be finished before a hundred and twenty days. I mean, that's just the, sure, the cap, quote-unquote. Okay.
And Mr. Blair, you're clear on what you.
Yes.
That's okay with you to bring it to us by next meeting?
Yes.
But the departments, could they start looking at it now or do they need to wait until the next meeting?
I think informally, you could have meetings now, just beginning now. I mean, we, the resolution will set the timeline, but there's nothing that would prohibit conversations starting now, before November eighteen.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Harrell.
Thank you all for your free time.
Thank you, Mr. Jones and Lisk.
Thank you.
And Flor Can. Thank you very much.
Good job. Well done.
So next we have, um, other business. And, um. Basically, this is the, um, November fifteenth work session regarding the, um, Sacagawea, um, family coming in regarding the statue on, um, Main Street. And so, um, this is basically agreement to pay the, um, Rose Abrahamson, who's the descendant for Sacagawea. There'll be four individuals coming into town with them. They sent an email response to my question of the consultant fee and said that they, um, first she said in a conversation what we wanted, whatever we wanted to pay her. I told her that they would need to tell us what that amount was. They sent the email back that said between five and, um, a thousand dollars per person. And so the four thousand dollars was just the, um, it would have been four thousand at the top end of that for four people. But we are now paying, we are paying for an extra night of rooms, um, at the hotel. Because originally there were supposed to be like two days of activities and once we had to change the date, um, because of the discussions that we had about how much time we would. Still didn't want to limit what they had planned to do in the community and with some other groups. So just subtracting, um, that was my rationale for subtracting that other four, five hundred dollars from the four thousand. Because we will be paying, um, for that additional night, which they will be doing stuff with, um, some other members of the community and UVA and not necessarily council. So that's where the thirty-five hundred dollars, um, came from. And we can, um, talking to, um, Rose Abrahamson, paying her, the stipend to her, um, who is leading and coordinating, which she could have received, um, based on what we pay other consultants just on her own. And then if there's money going to the other three members who will be in attendance, or we could direct staff to, um, we have their names to, um, divide the thirty-five hundred into four and pay each of them an equal amount. So Ryan just, um, and I think, um, Ryan Davidson and Kena just, um, wanted to have just some clarity around how I arrived at that, um, discussion with them and make sure that council was in the loop.
I'm a little confused. Is it a payment when you're talking about, is it an honorarium or, or this is separate from reimbursing? There, there's travel and lodging, which we usually reimburse.
Well, we have already booked their flights and reserved their hotels. Yes.
So this is an honorarium for?
Yes. So like they're coming in in a consulting capacity, so that was Ryan's recommendation. That was the terminology used between consulting fee versus honorarium. So we had seventy-five thousand dollars, um, allocated for this initially, and we'll spend less than ten, it looks like.
So with the seventy-five thousand, I know that we were talking about it. And, uh, when, um, Leslie was here, I think she said that she would be able to find that in our budget. But I think that she was looking at probably the year-end, um, surplus, uh, that we would have. But with that small amount, um, we could basically, uh, utilize that from, uh, the Strategic Initiative Fund. Because it's such a small amount and you'll be able to fund it from that account.
And that was my assumption from June that we were gonna do.
So I guess the question then is, is whether or not it makes it, makes sense to have it divvied up into four pieces or one, one sum? And does that matter, Mr. Dr. Richardson?
No, it's just according on how they want it. I mean, I don't know how they want to be reimbursed or the honorarium, however you want to.
So the recommendation for per person started with, um, a local, um, community member, um, that is helping to facilitate some of the, um, work, some of the other work that they'll be doing on, um, I guess Saturday now. So, um, Rose Abrahamson was fine with either direction.
It seems to me like it would be, it's, it sounds like, I mean, but, and then, I mean, there could be more. We could see more of this to understand it more. I mean, if there's, but that's not where we are. If it's, but it doesn't sound to me like it's consulting. It sounds like it's an honorarium. You know, we're, we're compensating them for their, their time in coming here and participating in something that we convened, which is very normal. And, and that if she's played a larger role in creating the whole thing, maybe she but you, you know, you, like if it was, each of them receives an honorarium that's fixed and then maybe if she is doing more work as she created the whole thing, then she could have a slightly larger one. But it, I'd wanna, you know, usually you'd get a proposal for this. You get like a one-page, you know, an overview and it'd be like, here's the, here's why this five hundred dollar, a thousand dollar honorarium makes sense.
Something in exchange.
Seven fifty for each one and you would have some. But I, I would be fine with that. I mean, that's a pretty normal practice.
Because they're not exactly getting, they're not getting a speaker fee. They're getting reimbursed for travel and, and night.
They're not being paid for work. They're, they're being, it's a, they're, they're receiving an honorarium for, they're participating in something that we're doing, which is, which is fine, in my opinion.
So they're, they're gracious enough to give us their time.
Yeah. And based, based on the conversation and where we and what this means for where we go next in terms of the statue on West Main Street, that was the part that could become, you know, that is consultant-like, right? Because they would be, but either way, it was just staff that was bringing up what, what it should be called.
Okay.
So.
And I guess we are gonna be moving forward at some point to plan out that discussion, right? Like that, like that, is there an agenda for that?
Yeah, our staff, um, clerk staff is working on the agenda for the day.
Thank you.
Right?
Sure. The, um, I guess the original resolution indicated that it would be NDS and city manager. The communications outreach coordinator, um, I'm sorry, council outreach coordinator was previously working on it, so it fell to us when he left. So that's why we've been handling it.
I see, right.
The agenda's, seems to be pretty simple. So mostly a presentation from our guests and then we'll have some more discussion.
I guess it just, maybe, maybe if we have like ideas about questions that we'd like to ask them.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to involve us a little bit.
Should we just send it to, to Kena, copy everybody?
Yeah, and I will say, just from someone, you know, the person who was, had, had the idea, it's been hard to try to figure out, I mean, the communication has been, um, the communication has been a little challenging. And so, um, you know, we is somehow, sometimes taking all three, um, clerk, assistant clerk and myself to have, you know, back and forth conversations to try to figure out like a direction. So it's been, um, you know, it's been a challenge trying to get things moving. And they're very open to doing it. It's just, and there's, there isn't a language barrier. It's just something that is, you know, making, um, the planning, uh, difficult. Okay. All right, so, um, in terms of the payment, you, you are seeing more?
How about seven fifty each and then a thousand for Rose? I have no idea if that's right, but it would seem like if you're trying to, if she was getting a little bit more because she's the organizing capacity.
Just run it by her.
Right, yeah. That's, I, I don't know.
You got that, like whatever. So a thousand for Rose and then the remaining
There's three more books on top of that.
Split between the other, um, the twenty-five hundred split among three people.
Sure.
All right, um, any other, do we need to vote on that?
We'll, we'll work out the funding strategy along the show. Identify it. But, uh, you know, I know we gotta do some other forms to make sure that
All right, um, so now we're at the last matters by the public. Is there anyone here who would like to speak?
Evening, council. Just make this really brief. Um, I'm Brad Solcom, city resident. Uh, I was pretty shocked by the, uh, tree presentation, particularly the part, uh, involving the parking garage and like maybe not really actually protecting trees. Um, and so, again, in the interest of making this brief, I just wanted to, uh, read a brief section from The Guardian from about a year ago. Um, they say that we're only just beginning to understand how the air we breathe affects not just our physical environment, but our mental capacity as well. At higher levels, CO2 clouds the mind. It makes us slower and less likely to develop new ideas. It degrades our ability to take in new information, change our minds or fi- uh, formulate complex thoughts. Sorry, obviously happening now. Uh, other studies have shown that high air pollution is linked to premature birth, low birth weight, mental illness in children and dementia in the elderly. So I just wanted to point out that when we talk about these tree discussions, we're not just talking about beautiful landscapes. We're talking about direct health effects on oftentimes some of our most vulnerable residents, something that comes up again and again in discussions of climate change. But also, as we look at these developments, sticking in parking garages, which are presumably for cars, which pump out more CO2, uh, and we're killing our trees at the same time. We're also literally choking our children to death. So I would just like to wrap with, in the spirit of the revised, uh, charter amendments, a quote that I tried to find the original, but I'll update it for the, uh, new language. "A counselor has made at least a start on discovering the meaning of human life when they plant shade trees under which they know full well they will never sit." You've probably heard that before, but I'd just like you to think about in these extensive discussions of development, uh, you know, whether we're actually going to be providing air for people to breathe in these new neighborhoods. That's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone?
Hey, guys. Uh, sorry to bring you to Tuesday. Happy day after your birthday, Wes. Uh, Rory Stoltenberg, Water Street, et cetera. I'll keep this real quick. I was just struck by one graphic in the tree presentation in particular. Uh, it showed the budget for this fiscal year. Uh, for tree planting, we got fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred twenty-five dollars. For tree preservation, we have fifty thousand dollars. And then for consultants, we have a hundred thousand dollars. Um, so if a budget shows what your priorities are, uh, it seems like you guys have pretty weird priorities. Uh, I think maybe it isn't so prudent how quick we are to turn to out-of-town consultants uh, when we can just sit down and do the work.
What was that from?
I don't know where you got that.
I don't remember that either.
Okay, um, anyone else? All right, meeting adjourned.